One meeting.
Good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock, so let's kick off this business meeting of Urbana School District 116. Roll call, please.
Member Marabu?
Here.
Member Hickson? Member Jones?
Here.
Member Langendorf here. Vice President Baxley?
Here.
President Palowski?
Here. We have a quorum. There are a few modifications to tonight's agenda. We'll be moving action item 8.1 up prior to board reports. And we will be moving administrative personnel item, action item 10.4 to immediately follow, to immediately proceed, sorry, administrative reports. It is now time for the citizen statements. If anybody in the audience would wish to make a formal statement for the board, please fill out a golden rod sheet, hand it to our recording secretary Lori Johnson. None of them received so far, so I'm going to make, going once, going twice. Okay, no citizen statements this evening. There is a call for an executive session after tonight's meeting for the purpose of personnel discussion, and there will be no action following the executive session. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve science agenda as modified.
Second, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to the second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we have an agenda. So first up, Luke. Sorry, Luke. Luke Sherrill, sorry.
So this is Luke Sherrill, and he is, was just recently a keen parent. And he has so graciously agreed to join the board as our sub-district six representative.
Hey, thank you. So now you and I are going to formally swear you in. Yeah, that's the hardest thing about it. All right. I say your name.
Aye, Luke Sherrill.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the board, can you hear me? The Board of Education of Urbana School District number 116 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage the respect and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Urbana School District number 116. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community's schools to advance the vision for Urbana School District number 116. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Congratulations. All right, moving on to board reports. What we have here tonight in 7.1 is what we have been doing at the last meeting of every academic year. You're right. Sorry, you're right. We need to make a motion to actually. Is there a motion from the floor?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Now on to a discussion on goals. This is, we've been doing this about the last five years or so, where at the end of the academic year and the first meeting back after our July break, we discuss like study topics we want to go to, and the high-level tasks we want the board to accomplish during the academic year. So to open the floor up for discussion at this point for things the board would want to have covered and study topics and things we want to get done next year.
I also gave you our 24-25 calendar, so you can see some of the topics from the, this year. And some of these are routine things that we will do every year, and some of them were very specific requests from the board. So that is kind of what we'll do again, is we will do this again in August. We do it at our first meeting again. So if you think of things over the summer, we can add those in, and we'll create a very similar calendar for next year, knowing that there are times when we have to move things and change things, and so, yep.
The cell phone policy at the high school, that's something that we haven't yet discussed because we were so busy last year working on the middle school. And maybe go forward and see if there are going to be changes for next year.
So I don't, I, the principal is in the audience, and they have, as a staff, talked about this and done some surveying about it. And it is my understanding that they have some parameters that they're setting for next year, but they are continuing with cell phones at high school. Is that correct, Mr. Guzman? Yes. Yes, and they did some surveying of staff at the end of the year to get feedback on what that looks like.
Okay.
Okay.
Communication has always been concern for the community members, and I'd like to see us going forth on thinking of other ways to convey to parents about what's going on in the schools and also have, getting input way before changes are decided in the high school or other schools. I'd like to see more of a study of the incoming kindergarteners and see what their levels are and what they might need in order to continue growth at a, at the rate that we'd like to see. If we don't start in kindergarten, we're never going to see the results in the second and third and fourth grade that we'd like to see. So I'd like to start looking at kindergarten curriculum and seeing what else we can do to help those students who might not be prepared for kindergarten.
I was contacted by the director of Immigrant Services Champagne, Urbana, and she would love an opportunity to, as part of a study session, to give a 10-minute address to the board, to basically talk about what they do. A lot of, I mean, they are here to welcome immigrants as they come to town, make sure they're registered in school. And so she wants to come in and discuss what they do and find, and discuss ways they could partner with the school district.
I had written a statement as part of the board's statements, which I thought we had moved to right after citizen statements.
Well, this-
And is it okay if I just do it now because it fits now?
Sure, I mean, this is-
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, this is the end of my first full year, so it's time for reflection. I have been thinking about the strategic planning process and about the number and severity of parent concerns that we have received about academics and safety in our schools. I was struck by the fact that the superintendent reported that the community members invited to the planning group were supportive when learning about the issues that we face. That should give us confidence to interact more openly and honestly with the community in the future. The superintendent reported that the community members said that they want to stay more involved and hold the district's feet to the fire in the future. That's great. But holding the district's feet to the fire on behalf of the community is a big part of our job. At a board training a few weeks ago, we were reminded of our board responsibilities. The Illinois Association of State Boards, of school boards, the trainer said that there were six major responsibilities that we had. Numbers five and six were monitors, performance of schools, and superintendent, and takes responsibility. And that was in the, what you just read, takes responsibility. The trainer went on to talk about monitoring. The words used to define monitoring were observing, assessing, documenting, complying, and making sure the district complies with policies and regulations. So how can we do better as a board? How can we get better? I have some suggestions. The first one was brought up by the president of the board more than a year ago. Designate a board committee that gathers and analyzes the data that we need and want to know to help us to make decisions going forward. There was a parent at the time who would offer to help us do that. Let's take him up on it. Number two, designate a round robin of board members to do exit interviews of randomly selected staff when they leave the district. The retention rate of certified staff in Urbana is 83.4%. Almost 17% of our certified staff are leaving the district each year. This doesn't include long-term subs. So that rate is even higher for staff who are serving in certified positions. According to the News Gazette, there are 10 area districts whose retention rate is worse than ours. The largest of those 10 is Rantoul. Thirty-seven districts do better than we do. The board needs to better understand the needs of staff. Number three, do an exit interview with randomly selected parents whose children are leaving for private schools. Number four, interview randomly selected parents of students from different schools and from, in a variety of high school classes. With both groups of parents, we need to find out the following. What do they want in a public education that we are not offering? Do we, can we, offer anything that the private schools don't offer? We need Urbana families to send their kids to our schools, and we need all of our kids in our classes. And we need a belief by the community that the district can serve all students. I do not mean to imply that the district is not doing its job in these areas. But as a board, we might have a different question to ask, a different point to raise, a different response to what is said. The data gathered should not be used to refute what the administration is telling us. It should just add to the knowledge base on which we set goals and priorities and make decisions.
Did we capture all that?
Aye, sure.
All right, thank you. Anybody else want to, like, discuss topics or to add for study sessions next year, or specific?
I had met the police chief during the, our former mayor's retirement party, and I introduced myself and said that I was a member of the board, and I was, had a brief discussion with him about fostering a broader relationship with the Urbana Police. And then I ran into a police lieutenant, Micklic, who is a former Leo parent, now going to be in the sixth grade center. And he expressed the same sort of request, and I thought that that was, that's good. I mean, that was a positive conversation we had about fostering a broader relationship, so maybe we can look into that.
Anybody else? Again, this is just an initial list. We're going to revisit this when we reconvene in August. All right. Any other board reports while we're here?
Not respond to everything that Jennifer said, but there was one thing that we did decide last year was as we were going to reduce the time that citizens could come and speak, we were also going to make more of an effort to go out in the community and to have smaller interactions or interactions with parents, whether or not it's at the library or at someplace in the community. And I think that we can do that on a regular basis. We have to decide on a day and an evening time once a month, and if two of us go to each meeting, and eventually we will have a pattern, and people know that they can come and talk to us over coffee or, or just have a time to chat. So it's really us to make that commitment, and I hope that when we discuss this coming in August, they will, can make those times available to the public. Even, the one time we did it, it was the, the, our vision was to have community members come in who would want to run for the board and if they had any questions. But Jennifer and I actually had an opportunity to sit and discuss things with, with each other. So, I mean, which is fine, because otherwise we wouldn't see each other, and there are things that, from her experience, that she could share with me and vice versa, and things that we could decide to do together as unified, unified members of the board. So I hope that we can do that come next year.
Anyone else? All right, next up is the forwarded action item 10.4, administrative personnel items, I guess since Angie's not here. Oh.
So we're here tonight. Sorry, I have a document, but I'm not going to be as eloquent as Angie, so please bear with me. Is Mr. Hightower here? Mr. Hightower, do you want to come up to the hot seat up at the front, please? I have the privilege tonight, Angie was sick, sorry, so you get to get me. I have the privilege tonight to welcome Darius, did I say it correctly, is it Darius Hightower, to the Urbana team. Mr. Hightower is very excited to be joining Dr. Preston Williams Elementary as an assistant principal this year, or for FY '26. He has two bachelor's degrees and a master's degree from Eastern Illinois University, and brings over 10 years of experience in education. Throughout his career, he has served both as a classroom teacher and as an administrator. And those experiences have shaped him and his commitment to creating a positive and inclusive learning environment for students. He believes that schools thrive when students, staff, families, and the community work together toward a shared goal or vision. He believes that creating opportunities for strong family engagement plays a major role in student achievement, and is looking forward to building meaningful relationships with parents, caregivers, and the entire school community. And while away from work, he loves spending time with his wife and their four kids, especially at sporting events or school activities. He likes to be there to cheer them on and make memories together, and it means everything to him. He's excited to begin his journey at Dr. Preston Williams Junior Elementary and is deeply grateful for the opportunity to work with the Urbana community.
Is there a motion for the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second. Any further comments, questions, discussion? Roll call, vote is in order.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Marabu?
Yes.
And Mr. Member Sherrill?
Oh, Member Sherrill.
Yes.
You're not on my list here. I put you down.
Welcome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You can say a few words if you like.
Just thanks for the opportunity. Look forward to joining the Urbana team and working together with everyone. And so again, just thank you, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. We'll now begin our administrative reports. First up are our school improvement updates, starting with Gerber School.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Roan. I'm the principal of Gerber School. And tonight I brought with me Jess Wilson, who is one of our teachers, who is also a member of our school improvement committee. And so Jess is here to help support me and to answer any questions you guys have. So without further ado, thank you, John. So we are going to review first our school improvement goals that we are finishing up this year. There are some good, some bad things, but a lot of information for us was, was built this year with our goals. So like all the other schools in the district, we had an attendance goal, a math goal, and a literacy goal. But our attendance goal looks a little different. As most of you remember, Gerber School is the district school that works with students who are residentially placed at Cunningham Children's Home. So their residential staff make sure they come to school. So we don't have the traditional attendance issues that some of our other district schools have. But we recognize that we have a similar issue when our students are out of class for their behavioral or social emotional needs. So that's what, one of our goals was. That's what our attendance goal was this current year, and you'll see that, that theme repeated in our new goals as well. This goal, what we were hoping to gain was that we would decrease school-wide student time out of class by 15% from the 23-24 school year to the 24-25 school year. And unfortunately, we did not meet this goal. We actually had an increase in time out of class despite our best efforts. And in a few minutes, we'll get to kind of the reflection, and I'll share some of our reasons why we feel like we had that happen. The good news, though, is our academic data. Despite our kids being out of class more this year, we rocked our academic data. We had, our math and our literacy goal are similar. They both use the math testing that a lot of our, our other schools use as well. But because of some of our very individualized levels that our students have, all our students are special education students, and our mobility rate is great. So we really wanted to look at their individual projected growth and see if we could make that movement with our kids. So our goal was that 55% of our students would make their projected growth on their map, math assessment across at least two benchmark periods. And by the end of the, the school year, we had 66% of our students meeting their individual growth score. So we felt very good about that. We felt like we fought hard for that. And our, our math teachers are very proud of the work they did, as they should be. Similarly, for our literacy, that was also looking at the map assessment, and we wanted 55% of students to meet their projected growth score on the map literacy. and we wanted 55% of students to meet their projected growth score on the map literacy assessment. And we also rocked this one. We had 70% of our students making their projected growth across at least two benchmark periods. So we're very proud of the academic work we did. Our kids are far behind and they really need to make progress. And so we are proud that, that our staff came together and, and really pushed our kids. We did a lot of reflections, you know, like you just saw, there were some good pieces to our data and there are some struggles in our data. And so our, our school improvement team and then our larger staff body, we talked about it a lot, like what, what was going on this year? What was different? And there are a couple of things that are kind of outside of Gerber that really impacted us this year. As you know, we're connected to Cunningham Children's Home and most of the students are placed there by DCFS. DCFS has had some new initiatives. They don't want kids growing up in residential treatment and we don't either. So they are really pushing kids to move through that program faster and thus through Gerber faster. And then Cunningham also opened up a DCFS shelter care program in one of the units. And so that is designed to be a short-term placement for kids as a more long-term, a more stable placement is being found for them. So those two pieces drastically increased our student mobility rate. And as anyone who works with kids in general, but definitely with kids with behavioral needs know, when you get new kids in, it kind of upsets the apple cart. And so we had this constant churning in our classrooms this year that was accelerated more than we've been used to. Really since COVID. Things had kind of, our, our mobility rate had slowed during COVID, but it really picked back up this year. And, and we felt that greatly. And so with that, we saw some of the kids that had been with us for a while struggle to adjust to that. We also saw that we brought in some kids with more intense needs, needs like we hadn't seen in a while. And so those two pieces, we really felt like played into that time out of class data. And, and the numbers that we were comparing didn't match. So the number of kids we served this year was drastically different than the number of kids we had served the year before because of our mobility rate. So you'll see that in our new goal, how we're, we're working to address some of that mobility and, and looking at things a little bit differently. Like I said, with our math, it was hard fought. At the beginning of the year, because we had so many changes, we were really struggling. This was just year two with the illustrative math curriculum and with a very different population, our teachers needed support. And the district had used Janet Moore, a math consultant in the past, and we were able to access some of our Gerber Title I grant funds to bring her back in. And I really think that made a huge difference in our teacher confidence with illustrative math to, to meet kids' needs, to meet them where they were at and really helped us push our kids closer to where they need to be. And then Jess, along with some of our other teachers, began that, that journey with the new language arts curriculum. So there were peaks and valleys with that as we learned that, as other people did. And one thing we, we've learned is, you know, we still need to adapt. Our kids have so many gaps. We're adapting and we also need to be supplementing reading and literacy in the other content areas as well. And so I think we're going to be working a lot this year to pull in the other content area teachers to help us build some of those literary, literacy skills even more. So all of those things, along with the school improvement components that I'm sure Chastity has talked to you guys about with the other school improvement plans, led us to these new goals. Our first goal is very similar to that attendance goal we had last year. But because of our mobility rate, we decided that we're going to look at that data a little differently. Instead of looking at it school-wide, we need to look at, more at the individual student level. And so how can we create change in our individual students since we're churning quite a bit? So our goal is across the '25-'26 school year, 80% of students will reduce their minutes out of class across at least two quarters. And so teachers are going to be reviewing that time out of class data monthly and including their TAs in those conversations. We're going to work really hard with our SEL instruction because we think that is a huge component of why kids are out of class. And we're also going to include our kids in those positive conversations about, hey, you know, you were upset, but you managed it in class. Like, how can we do that again the next time? Those kind of conversations and, and helping them understand their own data and, and be agents of change in their life. And then our culture and climate goal at Gerber, because we are a school focused on behavior and social emotional needs, we have a level system, a point system. And so on that system, we are going to, we are going to work towards having an average of 75% of students earning 80% or more of gold days. Gold is the highest you can be. Everybody wants to be gold. There are lots of short-term and long-term incentives tied to gold. It's communicated back to their residential units for pride and for incentives in the home environment as well. And once again, we're really going to work through our SEL instruction, including that seven mindsets curriculum that the rest of the district's going to do. Our teachers and staff are going to be constantly reviewing our behavioral data. And then as we see that there are specific weaknesses, we're going to do some of those targeted social emotional instructional groups with smaller groups of kids who need something over and above what our standard social skills curriculum is providing. Our literacy and math school, uh, goals will again be on that map assessment and looking at students' projected growth. We, we tried to set the bar high, but attainable. We, we made great growth, so we're going to try to keep striving for that. So we set our literacy goal at 70% and we're going to try to work on some cooperative learning strategies with our kids. Our kids historically don't work well together. It's that social emotional skills piece. And so if we can weave that together with the academics, we're excited to see what we can do with that. And we're going to continue to do some target, targeted specialized instruction with literacy. And myself, our assistant principal and our interventionist will be doing some data coaching with all of the teachers and the staff. Very similar in math, in math, we've set the bar at 65% of students that we want to meet their projected growth score on map across two benchmark periods. And we're going to use a lot of those same strategies, the cooperative learning, the data coaching. We also feel like there's some benchmark assessments that we need to develop to kind of help us progress monitor along the way. Those of you who are familiar with curriculum know that reading intervention-wise and assessment-wise is so far ahead of the game than, than math is. And so we really want to make some strides with math to kind of push those scores and, and those kids even farther. Any questions?
Board members, any questions or comments?
I, I just have a statement. I know you said that the mobility is quite high, but with the wonderful things that they're experiencing at Gerber, even if it's just a short time, hopefully we'll help them to the next place that they will go. So appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. That is absolutely our goal with every kid, Sheri, is that they, they can come in and feel like it's a safe space for them to learn and to just take a breath and get back on their feet and then hopefully move on to a, a more traditional setting.
I'm really appreciative of the report that you highlighted, like root cause, like why things went well. I mean, oftentimes we focus on when things don't go well, you've tried to root cause. We focused on the bringing in additional training for the math. So I guess, is that a lesson that we could take to our elementary schools? I mean, was it, can you kind of describe, I guess, what, what was reemphasized in that additional training?
Yeah, I, I think having that opportunity to bring in Janet to, like I said, build confidence as our teachers experienced a different population. Some of our teachers had to learn how to teach entirely different grade levels of math this year than what they were teaching last year. And so it was, it was very stressful for them in the beginning and, and having somebody who was that knowledgeable in math to come in and support them was, was a huge win.
Any other comments, questions? Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Urbana Early Childhood.
Just going to use this one since it's already on. Hi, I'm Katie Madigan. I am the principal at Urbana Early Childhood School. Thanks, Chastity, for joining me. So I do, do have a wonderful school improvement team. They just weren't able to be here today. So we changed one of our pictures to show you some of our cute kiddos that we have at early childhood. I am going to review first some of our year-end data from the '24-'25 school year. So we had three goals, just like every other school in the district. Our first was on attendance. We were aiming, aiming high that we would reduce our chronic absenteeism rate from 56% to below 40%, which we did not quite meet that objective, but we did reduce it. So we ended the school year at 50% of our students were chronically absent. And I'll go into some of that root cause a little bit later. Some of the things that we did were reviewing our tiered supports that we have for attendance with all of our staff and providing appropriate support for families when we could identify it. Communicating with families, the importance of attendance through like reminders in my principal's newsletter, but also monthly reminders in their backpacks and any other communication systems we had. We have had a, an attendance committee for several years and we continued the use of that through things like sending letters home when we've, at the end of a month, if we've noticed that family, a student hasn't been in attendance as much as we'd like, or postcards saying, "Thank you for coming to school more" when we see an improvement. And then we were also given the opportunity to use Panorama to track some of our interventions that, and, and conversations that we had with families throughout the school year when we noticed that they were not at school very often. The second goal that we had was for our math. So we use a tool, if you know preschoolers, three to five-year-olds cannot sit down and take a test on paper and pencil or even on a computer. So we use real-life things and, and some pictures. So we use a tool called Connecting Numbers to Quantity. And so essentially, we're just wanting them to show us three items, six items, nine items, and the teachers engage the students in play to get them to show that they understand quantity. And our goal was that 85% of our students going to kindergarten this coming school year would grow in their ability to connect numbers to quantity. And we did almost make it. We were really close. So 79% of our students did achieve that goal, which was really exciting for us to see. We had lots of times throughout the school year where we were taking time as a staff to review our data together and taking some specific planning time to review what we see and what we think we could change to improve the instruction in math. We had a full day, Professional Development Day. Early childhood gets to have a whole day to ourselves of things that are appropriate for us. And we had Jessica Hardy from the University of Illinois come and present engaging all young children in math learning using tiered instructional practices. And it was really, really beneficial to our staff to have that for an entire day. The year before, we'd also had some instruction on numbers, number talks, and I think those combined efforts really showed how our math knowledge in our students really increased this year. And then finally, we had a literacy goal and it was very similar. And, thank you. We have another tool. It's based on the BAME test of basic concepts. So basic, basic concept vocabulary is something that's essential for learning to read. So it includes words like before and after, first and last, some, many. And so we created an assessment based on one of those tests, shorter, because that one has 50 items. This only has 10. And they're ones that we felt like were really important for students to know. And we were looking to see if they could grow in their ability to point to the, to the pictures that match. And then if they were able to do all 10 pointing, if they could label the vocabulary concepts. We had 65% of our kindergarten-bound students who were able to increase their score by at least two. We realized that we have made some progress, but just not enough in this area. And some of our other data analysis showed that we really need to focus on our students with IEPs because those students were the ones who were not making as much progress and as much growth. And so that is something that we've written into our goal for next year. We reviewed our assessment protocols and accommodations. Our Tier One intensive teacher created physical representations of our vocabulary. So we found some of the students weren't able to point to on a picture which one might be around. So she made like a little diorama almost of a box with like crayons all around it and a box with crayons in it so that they could point to the one that was around. And we also conducted data review and reflection during our staff meetings and teacher meetings multiple times during the year. We used some of our staff development day and a few of our staff meetings to do some examination of using print and pre-K, getting instruction on the science of reading at the preschool level. And then we also had Lisa from the curriculum department come and do a presentation for our staff on how we could embed some of the things from CKLA, the new language arts curriculum that's being used in kindergarten up, into pre-K. And, and our staff found that really valuable. And we also had a family night in the fall that was literacy-focused. We had the Urbana Free Library come and then we played bingo using our concept words that we were focused on in French, Spanish and English. So one of the things that we really wanted to focus on is the fact that if our kids aren't at school and if they're having some behaviors that are not allowing them to learn, then they won't be able to complete the academic work. So our school staff really wanted to focus on those two things and that's where a lot of our root cause and reflection came. I think I spoke to you last year about this. Our attendance rate is not great, but three to five-year-olds are, are young. They're still building their immunities and getting sick a lot more often than older kids are. We do recognize that our program is only two and a half hours and so there are some families that are just unable to access that if they don't have childcare the rest of the day that's in Urbana and they may have to work. We do need to do some explicit teaching of the impact of regular attendance. We do need to do some explicit teaching of the impact of regular attendance on our families and do some education on excused versus unexcused absences for families. And really talking to them about our program is non-compulsory attendance, but it is important that they're there to set the foundation for future attendance expectations for the rest of their school career. We've also noticed that we have had a lot of incident reports. Those are what we, at the pre-K level, might call office referrals, older students, but we don't actually send them to the office. We just intervene in the classroom. And we noticed that most of our incident reports, over forty percent of them, were for physical aggression. And when we broke that down even more, we found that most of our students with the most incidents of physical aggression were black males. And so we, as a school, need to address what we as adults are doing to reinforce the behaviors or curb these behaviors. And so that is something that we are really going to dive into deeply for the entire first quarter of this next school year. So this year, we were tasked with four SMART goals. So our first one is about attendance. So we got from fifty-six to fifty percent this year. So we'd still like to aim for that, under forty percent of our students being chronically absent. We did some analysis and found that our students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch have a higher percentage of chronic absenteeism. So we would really like to focus on those populations. We had previously looked at average daily attendance in our attendance committee, which we never fell before, below eighty percent this year, which was really good for us. So we want to start looking more at that chronic absenteeism rate monthly when we meet and doing some more individual check-ins with classroom, staff, and families. And then working on some more creative intervention plans with families to help, you know, get past those barriers that are not allowing them to bring their kids to school every day. Our second goal is around our culture and climate goal. As I mentioned, we had a lot of students with physical aggression. And we would like to look at reducing the number of students that require the most intensive amount of supports. And as I said, we noticed that we had ten students who had the most incident reports, required the most attention from staff outside the classroom, and most of those students were black males. And so that is going to be a high level of focus for us this coming school year. We are going to have some targeted equity conversations. And we're gonna have a high focus on positive relationships and helping to fix those challenging behaviors. We are going to spend almost the entire first quarter, as I said, focused on something called Pyramid Model. It's sort of a pre-K level PBIS, which works in like nurturing positive relationships and those targeted intervention supports at the top level if we need it, but we're hoping that we won't need it as much. And then we are also keeping Second Step as our social-emotional curriculum at the pre-K level. Our staff, who piloted this year, found that seven mindsets was just not developmentally appropriate for preschoolers. And so they advocated strongly to be able to keep Second Step for the pre-K level. But we are going to still work in the mindsets that will be taught at the older grade levels as sort of like our character, replacing the character traits of the month. And then we have a literacy goal. We're really continuing to keep some of the same types of goals. We really want to focus on our kindergarten-bound students, but looking specifically at students who have special education eligibility. And we're going to continue to work on these basic concepts because they're integral to reading success in the future. But we have identified some key strategies, including having some professional development and teaching our teachers how to use similarities and differences to teach some of these concepts. They really lend themselves well to that because there's often that high-contrast word that they can, can do some of that similarity and difference. And then we also want to provide home practice and resources for families because we recognize that, especially at our level, the parents and family members are their first teachers. And so we want to provide them with the resources to reinforce things that their students are learning at school. And finally, we have a math goal that is also very similar. And we made a lot of growth in math, but we want to make that eighty-five percent. And so we are going to keep working on that and continue to work on our students with special education eligibility as well. Twenty percent of our population of our school has a special education eligibility. So it's a big part of U E C S. And we're gonna continue to use a lot of those, what we call non-linguistic representations, so pictures, real items, to reinforce those math concepts. And again, use the homework and practice with our families as well. And then our, like I said, our first quarter PD plan is really all focused on teaching those social-emotional skills so that we can get to the learning of the academic skills.
Board members, any questions?
You talked about the numbers of children who were qualified for free and reduced lunch. What is, I know what it is for the district, but what is it at your particular school?
It's approximately ninety percent. And so fifty-three percent of our students that qualify for free and reduced lunch are, were chronically absent this year.
I have a question regarding the physical aggression. And you stated mostly black males. The interaction that they're having, is it always with the teacher or is it with other staff members? Or could you just elaborate a little bit on that? And you say it's the same kids?
They're the highest number of students that, you know, there's a concentrated group, ten students, that received the most incidents. So we had two-hundred-and-thirty incident reports this year. Forty-four of those were the same student over and over again. And then when we bear it down to those top ten, you know, nine out of ten of those are black male students. Yeah, and those, to answer your question, the interactions are with teachers, support staff. In every classroom at U E C S, there's a teacher and two teaching assistants. There's also speech-language pathologists that come in and out of the room, family coordinators. So any of those adults that come in and out of spaces, they may have some of those interactions with them.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say my next because it kind of goes to what Lola's saying? So I normally don't ask questions or comment, but I wanted to applaud you, Katie, for taking on the leadership of this really hard, courageous conversation that your staff has been having around physical aggression. As the board knows and the community knows, if you've been listening to our data as a district, our black males are struggling in lots of areas, especially in exclusionary practices and being out of class. And so it is interesting that that is starting even at three, four, and five. And as Sheri said, you know, as we prepare for them to come to kindergarten, that's a really big transition too. So I know those have been hard conversations that your, your staff have had around that data, but I applaud you for taking it on as something that is not only going to improve your culture and climate, but is gonna improve the culture and climate for our district because your kids go to all of our schools. And so if we can teach some of those skills when they are three, four, and five, it will only help us when they get to our kindergarten. So thank you and thank you for, to U E C S staff.
I also know you have a difficult job because of the levels of disability as well. And some of those aggressions could be based on disability and some of it could be behavioral. And some of those things might take a long time to change, so, you know, it's very difficult.
Yes, we're just, you know, ongoing, but hoping to really have those open conversations with all of our staff so we can improve our practices as adults.
With regards to your chronic absenteeism goals, I mentioned you, you know, want to work with the families. Is there like a, like a formal data collection with regards to why an individual's, each individual student? I mean, it would be nice, like at a high level, to know, yeah, okay, fifty percent of the time, they really are sick. Or, or, you know, maybe, maybe bad weather days are a part of it. Or it'd be nice to kind of have a, like a high-level breakdown on why parents are telling you. Did you collect that data now?
So we don't necessarily have that for all of our absences because we do just have so many families that don't ever let us know why their student is absent. Despite our efforts to reach them, we don't always find out why they were gone. So I think that's, if we could get that information more upfront, then yeah, we would be able to identify. But when we have specific families that we're looking at, because we've identified that they've been gone for a significant period of time, then we're usually able to figure out, oh, they had, you know, a death in the family and so they were out of town for a week to deal with that. Or I had another student this year whose little sister was in the NICU in Chicago. And so she couldn't be away from her parents, who were with the younger sister for several months. So it's, you know, part of that educating our families is, is asking them to let us know why their student is absent that day. And we've done things like educating about appointments. So hoping you can schedule an appointment when your student isn't in session because they're only there for the morning or the afternoon session. And then even if you did have an appointment, it's okay to bring them in late. We'd rather them come in an hour late and get an hour and a half of instruction than miss the whole two and a half hours. And we're trying to reinforce all of those kinds of ideas over and over again.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up, this, this isn't a challenge, obviously, unique to early childhood. All of our buildings are struggling with this. And maybe, you know, we as a board can discuss strategies with regards to better data collection across the board. It's hard to develop strategies to combat it if you don't know the why.
Yeah, we hear anecdotally things, but yeah, exactly, we don't have necessarily all the data. We do ask our teachers to contact families where students have missed three days in a row. On the third day, we ask the teacher first to reach out and say, "Hey, what's going on? Why aren't you here?" if we don't know. And so that's where we start the conversation because they're the first people that have, have the relationship with the families, but still there are some that we just can't quite reach.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Did you have a, I'm sorry, sir. Quick question. Did you have a waiting list this year?
Yes, we did. Oh, it was about twenty.
I, some of the things I noticed is I, I did like how you pointed out that staff reactive to behavior instead of proactive, inconsistent staff responses to behavior and bias and discipline discrepancies in reporting. The fact that you guys are noticing that and coming up with something to help benefit that, I like that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Yankee Ridge. All right, Yankee Ridge Multilingual School.
Harder?
There we go. Yay! I'm Patricia Valente. I'm the principal at Yankee Ridge. This is...
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Smith-Andre, one of the assistant principals at Yankee Ridge.
And I'm Erica Rudolph, and I'm one of the other assistant principals at Yankee Ridge.
And we are the administrative team. First of all, I want to start by saying thank you so much for your trust, for being able, for opening up the school, giving us an opportunity to work together as teachers and as staff. And thank you for always, yay, having our back. Excuse me, and giving us the opportunity to work together with this amazing community. And so to start our night out, we, Elizabeth, is gonna talk about some of our goals that we made last year going into this year.
All right, so as some of our previous colleagues have said, we did not make all of our goals. We worked really hard this year. And so we're gonna go through, worked hard as a building, building our, building community, building culture with our staff, with our students. And so we're gonna go through our goals that we had set previously. And then we'll talk about, Patricia will go into more about the reflection and root causes for some of those. And then Erica will go into our next goals. So as everyone else has had, the literacy goal, math goal, and attendance goal. So first, we started out with our literacy goal. We have literacy goals for all three languages, Spanish Language Arts, English Language Arts, and French Language Arts. So our Spanish Language Arts goal was that forty-seven percent of students would meet their Spanish MAP projected growth goal. And this year, at the end of the school year, forty-three percent of students met their growth goal in Spanish. In English Language Arts, our goal was that forty-eight percent of students would meet their English MAP projected growth goal. At the end of this year, we found thirty-eight percent of students met their English growth goal. And then in, and those two goals are measured with MAP. And then in our French Language Arts data, we use the GB Plus, which Erica will talk about if you need to later. But that is our standardized assessment for French. And our goal was that fifty-nine percent of students would meet their French GB Plus projected growth goal. And at the end of this year, we found thirty-four percent of students met. Now for our math growth goal, we said by forty-four percent of students would meet their math MAP projected growth goal. And at the end of this year, forty-eight point five percent of students met, so, woo-hoo, we made that. And we really did, as a SIP team, focus a lot on math this school year. We're all using IM. There are a lot of key strategies that we wanted to make sure that everyone was using consistently across the board. So we did spend a lot of Professional Development PD SIP time on our Monday meetings focusing on that. So you can see that reflected in some of the pictures here. We have, first, we have a teacher using the IM curriculum. And we also have a picture of a student using Math Manipulatives, which was an emphasis. We wanted teachers to be using hand-on, hands-on things during math time. In addition to that, there are also two other pictures. The kind of bottom-middle picture is a teacher presenting a, a warm-up lesson. And this is a kindergarten teacher. And we asked other teachers from other grade levels to also present their warm-ups in a similar way so that they can see how those lessons connect and the importance of making sure that we get to each piece of IM. And then we also had someone from the U of I come in. He was working with a grade-level team, but he also came in and did some PD with us on how we can incorporate IM and also use like group work and moving around, getting up, interactions, and things like that to support. And I think all those things really helped us reach that math growth goal this year. And then finally, we had our attendance growth goal. And our goal was that we would decrease the number of chronically absent students to twenty percent. And at the end of this school year, our chronic absenteeism rate was twenty-two percent. I think we all, even though we didn't meet the goal, we all are really proud of our attendance this school year. I think throughout the whole year, we, we really pushed hard to have our families come to school, have our students send their, have families send their students to school. And we really emphasized the importance of that. We have some really great family liaison slash SEAs who have worked so hard in collaboration with teachers, with admin, with all of us to help support our students coming to school. And then we did have a few different things that we included to try to build that community, build that culture. So for example, having a friends and family board in each classroom, making students want to be here. This is my family. This is my team. This is why I'm here. I need to come to school to be with them. And then we also had a daily attendance board that was updated every day with the grade-level attendance. And so students would, it was a very visible board. So when students walked by, they could see how their grade level was doing. And they would get excited about that and want to be, make sure that they were, they were showing up and being there.
And so some of our root causes are, we're a new building. It's our first time together. Three buildings put together, different systems, different ways of kind of running a school. So really trying to be, make our systems united, come together in similar ideas and similar visions was kind of working towards that. And so some of the, the scores and some of our projected growth was affected a little bit by that change. I'm excited for the years to come as we, as we... I'm excited for the years to come, as we, as we come together with our vision, as we grow in that space, how our literacy, math, and our other goals will continue to grow. And so because of that, we recognize that we need to c- continue to grow our systems, right? So MTSS being one of our bigger systems to be able to notice students and when they need literacy support, or math support, or behavioral support. So be able to create clear systems that t- teachers are aware of, parents are aware of, that we can communicate and meet the needs in tier two as well as in tier one. Another root cause would be the unfamiliarity with the new curriculum and the learning curve of navigating a new platform. So CKLA and Caminos was new. We did K-five Caminos in Spanish. And then CKLA, our French dual-language program, used CKLA, K through five. And we had our coach that was there two ti- every two weeks for two days. The, the K-two teachers really worked intensely with her in the classroom, planning. And so getting to know that program was just kind of part of the learning curve and building those foundations. And so our consistent monitoring, our consistent work in that area will be our goal for next year, as well as continuing to grow those spaces, the phonemic development and literacy through three through five. And in three through five, we continued our work with the Bili literacy unit frameworks, which we've been doing since the beginning of the program. And we had wonderful professional development, but just now unifying all the teachers doing the same thing together, right? Because in three different buildings, just different ways of doing things was really important. And then our knowledge and consistency use of multilingual instructional best practices throughout the building. So coming together and being on the same page of what strategies we're using for our multilingual learners. Being very explicit, very monitoring, being clear about that, and then being able to get professional development and support for the teachers to be able to implement those high, high-yielding best practices for multilingual learners. As part of growing and be- that consistency in program is really kind of being able to be consistent in implementing of our language allocation plan. And so I just wanted to bring out our language allocation plan for Spanish and for English. So I'm super excited that... And French. What's a lot of languages going on? So I'm super excited about next year just being more consistently using our access scores and being able to measure and consistently implement our English instruction from kindergarten through fifth grade. We teach English in kindergarten, just want everyone to know that. And so what's powerful about, I mean, fifty-five minutes of English instruction, and as we're going as a team, consistently implementing programs like Ufly connected to our mystery science, so that they're doing the content and strategic literacy work at the same time, and then being able to talk about sheltered English instruction. And be able to do some of that sheltered instruction in Spanish and in French as well. So that we're unifying the three languages to have that metalinguistic reflection, so it's happening. So teachers are aware of it, students are aware of it, but being able to be true, making our schedule, which is so exciting. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to make our schedule, yay! We were able to, um, really use the allocation plan that the Teaching for Bili literacy has recommended for us to keep an eighty-twenty model, fifty-fifty model in French, and making sure our literacy blocks can give that comprehensive literacy instruction in all of the languages. I think that's an exciting space. Being together, now we can have those conversations and tackle some of those difficult spaces. How do we do it? What does it look like? And we can put our minds together. So this is a really important part in our continued vision in growing the language allocation. And then another so exciting part, we had Dana from the Bili literacy unit, um, Teaching for Bili literacy space come and really support us in building MAP for the three through, three through third grade through fifth grade. So what are MAPs? What is that? It's taking the standards in science and social studies and then looking, mapping it out for the year, and then being able to connect the, the writing standards and the reading standards strategically, using both languages for French and for Spanish in a way that you get the best bang for your metalinguistic connection. And then being able to, now that they had time this year making those, making a map, teachers have a vision of where they're going. Then you take a unit, and in that unit that most of them have, we're just now perfecting it or amplifying it or making it stronger. You take the unit, it's six, it could be six weeks, it could be four weeks, and then you're, you're, you're adding the details of what's the vocabulary? What's the metalinguistic that I'm doing? What is the, the supports that I need? So it's been really powerful to see collaborative groups, grade levels. We've had time, once a week, to come together as a grade level, third through fifth, to be able to plan these units, to plan the mapping of these units. And so I'm really excited for the fu- next years to come, how this is going to make an impact in our reading and our growth in literacy. And so I just, this, this is the work we did this year. For me, as a bilingual teacher and a principal and a coach, this is, this is the bread and butter of what life is for multilingual. And so this is just kind of the literacy, the book that we're using, this is an example of the teachers collaborating during our SIP professional development, because we've also had opportunities, three hours, sometimes six hours, to be able to do this work together collaboratively, collaboratively with teachers. That's where you get the most creativity and the most, like just the juiciest curriculum that really connects to students and brings high-yielding standards, multilingual standards to the page. And so the example at the top is the mapping, the way that, that we do as with, with the teachers and how they, they thought through the standards and they thought through the strategies. And so I'm excited to see this implemented more in our continual work in this space. This will be powerful in our growth for literacy. Another really great opportunity, I love, I love community, I love families, I love parties, I love disconnecting. We all love parties, right? But our parent engagement, and so these are just pictures of some of the amazing opportunities. We have an amazing PTA, we have an amazing parent liaison, we have amazing admin team, amazing teachers, we have amazing community members that all joined in to be part of these activities. And so I just wanna, I just want to celebrate the, the way the community and the way the teachers have just really stepped up and just the excitement and the passion to be part of something new. And so I hope to continue the intensity of this, you know, I welcome, I welcome should be, I love seeing parents in, in the school. And so I just love being with the community. And I think that hel- has helped some of our culture and climate for this year. So I'm gonna hand off the next person.
So, um, we've seen this before, so I'm gonna go ahead and skip this. I almost didn't skip it. So I get the pleasure to talk about what our work is going to be moving forward, um, as everyone else has done. We have written some goals, and what we did was we took some of the things that we had from last year, and we kept the good, and we added so that we can keep getting even better. So our attendance goal is to improve our attendance and reduce chronic absenteeism to twenty percent or below by the end of this upcoming school year. We're going to implement some targeted strategies that are gonna focus on our adult practices. So what are the adults in our building doing, as well as student engagement? Um, we talked a little bit about some of the things that we've done in the past, we're keeping those things that are good and moving on. We are recognizing that eighty-nine percent of chronically absent students are Latina, and we aim to reduce absenteeism within this group by fifteen percent. So how are we gonna do that? Uh, our key strategies include establishing clear school-wide expectations for documenting parent contacts. We've been documenting parent contacts, but we want to make it so that it's the same across the board. That's gonna make it easier for all of us to communicate, um, with our families and then with each other about how that's going. Engaging in positive one-on-one conversations with students using conscious discipline practices. And then rolling out a comprehensive attendance handbook, which we've been working on, um, and we're really proud of, that outlines procedures and is accessible through the Yankee Ridge dashboard. We want it to be available, we want it to be available to staff. Um, and so everyone knows what the expectations are moving forward. Um, and these efforts will be led by, by everyone. We're going to focus on those starting right off, day one. And you'll see that in our PD plan, and then revisit them in quarter three to ensure consistency and impact. Our next goal is on culture and climate. So we will strengthen our school's culture and climate by consistently implementing MTSS procedures and enhancing our school-wide PBIS systems. So we're going to start with the use of CHAMPs, which, um, we're excited about and we're excited to learn more about. You'll also see that reflected in our PD plan and targeted PBIS supports. We aim to create a positive and predictable learning environment for all of our students. So our goal is to reach eighty percent implementation fidelity on tier one by the TFI by spring twenty-twenty-six, and with tier two and tier three implementation guided by the fall TFI data. Our key activities are going to be using Panorama, which we have available, and we have, um, spent some time on. Um, again, you'll see Panorama reflected in our PD plan to talk more about how to use interventions provided by Panorama. Our SAIG groups, or SAIG groups, social academic instructional groups. And the development of some clear procedures. I know Patricia touched on those a little bit, but, um, you know, it's good because we all know the plan and we're working towards it, so that the procedures are really streamlined, they're really aligned, it's really consistent so that everybody knows what's going on and feels that they're part of those decisions. Alright, next is our literacy goal and our key activities. So this is, this is the big one, um, and this is, I can explain a little bit about the GB plus within this. Yankee Ridge will, um, improve our student achievement in Spanish language arts, which we usually shorten to SLA, French language arts, FLA, and English language arts, ELA, by increasing the percentage of students meeting their individual growth goals with the aim of reaching fifty percent or more in each area by the end of this upcoming school year. So to achieve this, and this is where we have to break it down by our languages, increase SLA growth by at least five percent across each grade level band, ELA growth by at least ten percent, and then raise the percentage of students meeting their French GB plus projected growth goal from thirty-four percent, which is our data from last year, to fifty percent. So just to clarify, the GB plus is the Evaluation de Lecture primaire, and it assesses literacy in French. So how are we gonna do that? Uh, targeted instructional strategies with high effect size, such as identifying similarities and differences in cooperative learning. Modeling strategies, which again, that's something that we talked about using in some of our, um, our PD and some of our days from last year. We love those, we love coming together, we love having our teachers who are experts in areas, being able to highlight those. And supporting these strategies through peer-to-peer observations informed by walkthrough data and needs assessments. And then all staff will integrate interactive graphic and sensory supports into instruction, ensuring consistent implementation from day one. So day one, we're starting off right away. Through ongoing professional development led by various staff members, including the SIP team, the tier one team, CIT, and administration. Alright, our math goals. So as Elizabeth mentioned, we spent a lot of time focused on math, um, with having the IM curriculum and, and knowing that that was something that we wanted to highlight and spend time on. And so we've kept on going with some really high math goals for ourselves. Yankee Ridge Multilingual will increase the percentage of students meeting their growth goals in each grade level band by at least six percent with a goal of reaching fifty percent for all students meeting their growth targets by the end of the year. Keys activities include high-impact instructional strategies, including identifying similarities and differences, cooperative learning. And these strategies will be introduced and modeled. We're gonna keep what we've had, and we're gonna keep on, um, working with our teachers during staff meetings, um, during professional development time to, um, continue to support these. Uh, use data from our walkthroughs and any needs assessments so that we can find out what, what do we need? What does our school need? What do our teachers need? What do our kids need? Um, having that come from us and having that come from peer-to-peer observations as well, so that we can reinforce the most effective instructional practices and do what's best for our kids. All staff is going to incorporate interactive graphic and sensory supports into their daily instruction to include equitable access and engagement for all of our learners. These strategies will be embedded from day one and reinforced through ongoing professional development and collaborative support structures. It's a great sentence, so we put it in twice. Okay, so we have also, um, started planning and developing our first quarter PD plan. So, um, kind of have three, three pieces here for quarter one, and our first piece is starting off with those, um, three professional development days, opening day, institute day, the time that we get in those, um, in those spaces. So during that time, we want to focus on CHAMPs, because that will be new, uh, for everyone, so want to make sure everyone gets that information. We also, also want to make sure that we reiterate, um, our Urbana School District's messaging here with our mission and vision. So making sure everyone, um, is aware of that and aware of the changes and, um, understands that that's where we're going now. We also want to emphasize these, uh, multilingual best practices. So that includes kind of almost getting back to the basics of the three pillars of dual-language education. So making sure everyone, remind everyone of those things and, um, keep thinking of those as we move forward. And then, um, doing a refresher on our PBIS systems. We're not making any big changes from what we did last year, but making sure that we're all uniform, on the same page with our PBIS systems, and, um, ready to start day one uh, with those things in our classrooms and in our schools.
And so on, on number two, you kind of see the examples of the different PD sessions we will have on the first days, institutional days, and throughout the time that we will be, this first quarter. So we're really interested in continuing to clarify the chain of command for behaviors. What's a classroom behavior? What's a school, what's a, what's admin?
Mm-hmm.
Behavior? What does that look like? What's the process? How do you call for help? How do we support the teachers? What are the, what are the pieces in the classroom that teachers need to have? The calming corner, the incentives, those different pieces. Also building a school community through school-family strategies, parent contact logs, so really continuing to do home visits, connect with families. Do our, uh, have our events where we have, come together and talk about, talk with parents and families about the different areas that we can improve and strategize, well, how we can make the school stronger. Um, we want to continue to use Panorama to look at the profiles of the students and, and what they need. And using WIDA data is really important to implement as we're, we're working through growing our ESL component stronger, being able to use the, the domains, the reading, listening, speaking, and writing. And being able to help te- teachers work through, what does that look like? Like going back to the roots, right? Because I think sometimes over the years, being the only strand in a building, it's easy to kind of mold yourself to everyone else. And now we can really come alive, right, and focus on what we're passionate about. Um, also just being able to teach, continue to enforce the PBIS core values, why we're doing it, who we are, what does it mean? Celebrating incentives and families and, and students through that. And then launching walkthroughs, so not just having admin walkthroughs, but also having tier one peer walkthroughs. Be able to open the door to look at, interact with each other and model classrooms. And it's, we're doing this together, it's not just us acting upon you, but building that collaborative t- we have amazing staff. Like, the, 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 the knowledge that's in that building is tremendous, and so it's just being able to unify it and unlock it and work together. I'm excited to do next year.
And since we're always thinking just a little bit even further ahead, looking into second quarter, continuing implementing some of our IM strategies. Again, we, um, we like where we're going with math and we, we want to keep working on it and hopefully can reach our goal.
Thank you. Any questions?
Board members, any questions? Go ahead, Jennifer.
I was wondering if you looked at the math, the mathematics data, um, by, um, language. So did, you know, the French students, the Spanish students? Uh, and the reason I'm asking is we had some parents come in earlier in the year and ask about, um, not having, and I'm trying to remember, was it a three, four, uh, combination class for next year? And that we did have enough staff to do that for next year. I, it was suggested that per- perhaps if we couldn't afford two separate classes for that grade level, but that maybe we could have one point five, so that the point five could take one of the math, you know, the math groups, the either, the higher level, the lower level math groups. And I was wondering, um, if you looked at those combination classes, did that affect the math, the math scores? Because the math, un- I, I could see how you could teach literacy in the combination classes a lot more easily. Um, and so I'm just wondering about the math, and were we able to accommodate anything that the parents asked about that?
Jennifer, is there, can I hand that off to you?
Well, I guess I don't, I can't speak to how they're breaking it up in the classroom. Um, but I do know one of our goals next year was to provide more differentiation instruction for, uh, those teachers that are teaching the combos. I don't know if Erica wants to speak to that.
I mean, I can speak to it a little bit. I, I don't, I don't have any actually, uh, of the data right in front of me. I'd be happy to look at it, um, and get back to you about that, but, um, it is something... But it is something that as we were coming in, as we spoke about, you know, coming in and seeing what we wanted to do moving forward. We have provided a lot of professional development opportunities. I know that I've spoken with a, a coach from the IM program and asked, you know, what are some best practices that we can do in some of the combined classes? We provided professional development this summer for some extra planning for things and that can include math. And, and working with the best ways to support our teachers and really trying to listen to the things that they need and what they see in their classrooms. So that we can best support combined classes.
To connect to scores, we did look at our two-three was one of our highest math scores.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't have any of that data in front of me, but I, I do know that like our two-three, and same thing for the GB plus as well. Our two-three combined classes had some of our highest scores.
And we do have some math data disaggregated by dual-language programs. We'll share a little bit later on.
In regard to the staff member or the one point five, we weren't adding an additional teacher. We have talked about adding an additional teaching assistant to be there to help with the groups. But that again, will depend on what those numbers look like after we do centralized registration.
Yeah, when, when, when you looked at the numbers of this year's classes, if all of those kids just moved up, that would be. I think when I looked at it, it was a class of twenty-six. And so it would be a class of twenty-six kids speaking, trying to learn two languages. And they're, then to have them at different grade levels also, that would be challenging. So that's why I was wondering, and the parents did come and ask us about it, so I was wondering what happened.
I'm going to speak up as curriculum, because with math, what's great. Yeah, I'm going to speak up with curriculum, what's great about our illustrative math program and with their standards that. Oh, sorry, with our standards that we teach, they build on each other. So like if I'm teaching a two-three split, a lot of the skills that they're teaching is really the same in the strategies. So I can see two-three teaching the same skill, but like second grade, they're adding up to a hundred, and third grade's adding up to a thousand. And so you can still teach that skill, but it's just second grade's working with up to a hundred, third grade's working up to a thousand. They do a lot with time, whereas second grade is like five minutes, fifteen minutes, and third grade is within one minute. So you can still teach like the same concepts, but that, that's where that little differentiation piece comes in. And IM is all about your mathematical thinking and how you think about problems and persevere with problems. Versus like teaching like memorization. And so I think with IM, it's, it's, if you have that split, it would be not easier, but it, it's. You can teach the same concepts, but just expand it based off of what grade you're teaching. Does that make sense? Yeah, and then using manipulative.
Yeah, additionally, there's opportunities within IM for students to work independently with support. So while some students are getting direction instruction, other students are able to have independent time to work. And to have those different groups kind of flowing, working back to get, back and forth depending on the time.
And centers are great. Our program for illustrative math has centers built in. And so the teacher could also have that split, you know, while students are working at centers, they could also be pulling a group and teaching that group specific concepts that they need. So that's the, the beauty about our IM math curriculum is that it has many opportunities for differentiation, so.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you bringing that up, because that is something we're working through as a building. So it's good to be able to explain some of the different things that are happening. Thank you for asking.
I'd like to congratulate you for achieving something that we all had as a vision, blending our two programs together and.
Well, three buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But as far as the, the two Spanish speak, Spanish schools together, that was something that we didn't. We always wanted to, to see and it's good to see that you've been able to accomplish that, and thank you very much. It was a difficult job you have. Also, you also have the same difficulties as King Schools, that the students are coming all the time. And I didn't know, I didn't, so that's a big adjustment, but I didn't know exactly what was going to happen the second semester. But you were able to maintain student enrollment. And you also have the biggest school in the district as far as the elementary schools. So with over five hundred students there, so you've been able to maintain that, which I'm sure is very difficult to do.
But when it's, when, when it's something you love and it's something, I come every day to work, glad I'm coming to work. Like for me, it's my dream. Like this is a dream. I'm living a dream. It's not easy, but it, the hope and the excitement of it, like really, like I, I'm so blessed. I am blessed to be here and every day I'm like, oh my gosh, I can't believe I'm here, so.
But there are some things that you just cannot control and you don't have any say about it. And those are the things that are the most difficult things to, to deal with, and they have been very difficult this year. So you've managed to maintain the, the attendance and the enrollment, which I know was very difficult.
You're Yankee Ridge's hype girl.
You should see her on Fridays.
Maybe you have.
Maybe you have.
Any other other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is the sixth grade center.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to be here. I wanted to say thank you to the board again for granting me the honor of being the first administrator of the sixth grade center. I'm excited about this opportunity. We have a hype crew ourselves, and I'm appreciative of the opportunity to be doing this work with the wonderful Ms. Jeanette Delgado.
Hi, everybody.
And as you can see with us, we brought some members of our school improvement leadership team or our Silt. We are a very energetic group and we are excited about this work. But it's really a testament of our collective commitment to excellence and moving forward. To bring out some student growth and achievement for our rising sixth graders, our incoming sixth graders. So we're excited about this opportunity and happy to be here. You'll see the, the members' names on the screen of all of our school improvement leadership team. With us tonight is Cindy Adamick, Rusty Clevenger, Letitia Douglas, and Alyssa Ginsburg. Thank you for being here. They've been very instrumental in this process, so we appreciate them. So as a new building, of course, we didn't have any goals from last year. However, we did think that it was important to look at where our students landed at the end of their twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So we did some data digging and looked at our, our incoming fifth grade, our incoming sixth graders' data. And for our literacy goal, they, thirty-one percent of our fifth graders met or exceeded their growth, their projected growth goals in literacy for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Which was a total of ninety-one students. For math, thirty-six percent of the fifth graders that are now coming in to be sixth graders, which is a hundred and eight students, met or exceeded their projected growth goals in math. You'll notice that when we get to our school improvement goals for this coming year, we will not focus on projected growth. Instead, we'll look at proficiency and we'll explain why when we get to that point. When it comes to chronically absent student data, based on Panorama data for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Twenty-two percent of our fifth graders demonstrated chronic absenteeism, which was one of the lowest tied, it seems to be with another group. So twenty-two percent of them, and so we are looking to decrease that as well.
As we have talked about with our root causes and reflections, this information was taken from UMS. And then also feedback that came from the current fifth graders that are going to be rising sixth graders coming up. And a lot of the root causes, just like other buildings as well, was absenteeism, engaging instruction, consistent systems and accountability. And with us moving into the sixth grade center, we're really looking at starting off with very strong consistent systems and accountability. As far as reflection that goes along with it too, we have consistent monitoring of data and implementation adjustments based on the data. We really want to get student voice. We, the students are going to be the key factors to how successful sixth grade center is going to be. And without their voices, it, the change is not going to happen. So we are really looking forward to getting student voice and their feedback. We're going to keep moving on with ongoing professional development, implementation of learning walks to ensure intentional fidelity of systems and practices. And then ensuring accountability measures are intentional and consistent across the buildings. I'm going to move forward with that one, but.
All right, and to begin, our attendance goal for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We are going to improve overall student attendance by decreasing our chronic absentee rate from the twenty-two percent that you saw in the previous slide. To fifteen, which is a reduction of seven percent. Our SMARTY goal, again, we're going to target those specific groups that are listed there. And, and get an additional three percent reduction in the chronic absenteeism rate, so a total of ten percent for those targeted groups. And some of our key strategies are going to include implementing attendance verification process and system. Which we found that as part of the six-eight building, that a lot of our attendance data, we were missing some things because they. We weren't capturing all of the updates that needed to happen in our attendance. Meaning that students who came in significantly late, may, their attendance may not have been updated accurately. And so we wanted to implement this system to make sure that our attendance is accurate and make sure that it's being updated on a regular basis. And so this attendance verification system will require staff to look at a report and verify, yes, this attendance is accurate. And if it's not, to indicate any changes and make the changes so that it's done in a timely and consistent way. So that when we're looking at our data, we know that it's accurate. Another strategy that we intend to do is use Panorama for our contact, our parent contact log. But we also want to increase our communication with families about the importance of attendance. So we'll do that by, by sending out some postcards on a regular basis to talk about why attendance is so important. Why it's important that students come to school and are energetic and ready to learn. We'll also host some family engagement events through our FACE team, which if you know FACE, is family academic supports and engagement. So hosting some events, so we talk about why it's important, not that just that students show up, but that they're in class, ready to learn. They're on time and they're engaged in the learning process, putting forth their all. Because it's not just what our staff does, it is also that partnership that we build with our students and our families as well. Another strategy is we're going to make sure that our tiered support systems for intervention are in place. So that when we start to notice patterns about student attendance, meaning either they're not coming to school. Or maybe they're coming and maybe not getting to class on time like they should, that we're identifying those patterns and, and digging into the why. Having the conversations with our students, and that starts with our teachers, you know, noticing because they are the first point of contact. Contact when it comes to having students in the classroom, seeing, okay, if this student has missed, you know, certain number of my classes, I'm reaching out to that student. And having that conversation and say, you know what's going on, but also contacting the family and making that a three-part conversation. So it's not just with the teachers and, and students, but teachers, students, and families. Because we want to instill that partnership, understanding that this is all a collective work between us and them. And so we'll make sure that we partner with our SEA and our family liaison to have the harder conversations. When we notice that there's a significant pattern of chronic absenteeism, so that we can identify needs and find ways to support those needs. To make sure that students are getting into the building like they need to.
Moving on to our culture and climate goal. By the end of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, implementation of Avid framework strategies will be observed in at least eighty-five percent of each teacher's classroom walkthrough data. And from the fall twenty-twenty-five to spring twenty-twenty-six, there would be a five percent average increase in students' sense of belonging as measured by the Panorama Student Climate Survey. One of our SMARTY goals that goes along with that is that by the end of the spring twenty-twenty-six, students in each of the following subgroups. Will report an average of an eight percent increase in their sense of belonging as measured by the Panorama survey. Including our students of color, our multilingual learners, and our students with IEPs. To try and reach those goals, we, our key strategy is going to be providing ongoing professional development on the implementation of seven mindsets. The SEL curriculum and, and through Avid, the framework to support implementation with fidelity and intentionality. With that, with the Avid framework, we're going to be working specifically with the goal of relational capacity. With relational capacity with Avid, we're going to be hitting the rigor, advocating for our students. And then supporting there to remove barriers that students might have academically, socially, within the buildings. Another key strategy will be consistently monitoring implementation of SEL and Avid. Strategies through the walkthroughs and providing feedback to improve outcomes. The third strategy that we have along with that is establish student committee, soliciting student voice. And using feedback to improve student culture and climate practices. So once again, making sure that our students have that voice to make that change within our building.
And then before we get to our literacy goal, I wanted to reemphasize that we'll be at Avid building schoolwide. And so we do have an Avid elective class that some of our students are enrolled in who apply and have entered into Avid. But as a building that is pushing Avid schoolwide, we want to make sure that everyone is engaged in those instructional practices. Our, our teachers understand what the Avid framework is, that its foundation is that relational capacity, which it matters. How we engage with our students socially, because if, if they are not responding to us socially and emotionally. They are likely not to engage in the curriculum and the instructional practices. And so we really want to build those positive relationships with, with students so we can get that rigor out of them. And then push forward to achieve our outcomes. And so when we're looking at our literacy goal, of course, this is where I talked about at the beginning, the previous data was based on projected growth. And we're going to be targeting proficiency, and the reason for that is because we know that proficiency is the best indicator of whether our students are college and career ready. And so that is also tied with the district strategic plan, and we also are aligned with the middle school. So that we're all three grade levels focusing on that proficiency. We want to get students meeting their expectations and meeting the standards at their grade level. Because that is going to be the best indicator of, again, like I said, if they're college and career ready. And so we're, we're really going to be aggressive with that. And so as you see here, we did look at where our, our rising sixth graders landed when it comes to proficiency. The numbers are not good, but we are energetic and ready to push forth for these goals. So for literacy, they landed at nineteen percent of, of the students proficient in literacy. Which again, is, is, that just tells us that we have a lot of work to do, but we're committed to that work. And so we want to raise that by ten percent, and I know it may not seem like a large number. But we're talking about thirty-one approximately of our students, because that last check, it was about three hundred and seventeen students that are coming into the sixth grade center. So about thirty-one, thirty-two students that were really going to be moving from where they are significantly in that twentieth or, or lower percentile into the sixtieth percentile. Is where we want to move them with regard to math. And we're going to do that, and we have some targeted focus for our, our students of color, students with IEPs and multilingual learners. Where we are going to push for an additional five percent for those targeted groups. Because we really want to make sure we're hitting our, our students who are underrepresented and making sure that they can achieve their best as well. We'll do that by implementing the Avid focused note-taking strategy, which is a high-yield strategy for note-taking. And allows students to synthesize their thinking, engage in collaborative discussions. Guide their information through summarization, and then they'll be able to reflect and apply their learning in every content area. We also want to push for comprehension strategies across content areas, specifically those that pertain to vocabulary and summarizing. We found that as we began to focus on, and I'm talking about our, before practice as a six-eight building. We found that when we really focus on vocabulary, especially academic and content-specific vocabulary, it increased students' comprehension. And we were able to see some noted growth when we were analyzing our map data. So we want to capitalize on that and continue to build that with our incoming sixth graders by facilitating that same thing. And so we'll continue to do that. And we're going to use not just our map data, but our into literature, which is our ELA curriculum data. Our SLA data, which is the Santiana curriculum. And then, like I said, map to really make some data-informed decisions. Looking at those targeted areas where students are struggling or where there's a huge opportunity or achievement gap. So we can put in the, the correct strategies to help build students' confidence in that and build their skills in that area as well.
And for our math goal, just like how Ms. Carr said. Our math goal is also going to be based on proficiency, and it kind of, it also goes along with our strategic planning through the district. So by June twenty-twenty-six, the sixth grade center will increase overall student proficiency in math computation by ten percent. From sixteen percent in twenty-twenty-five to twenty, to twenty-six percent in twenty-twenty-six as measured by spring twenty-twenty-six math, map growth assessment. So also with that, we have the goal that relates to our targeted groups, which is an increase, well, sorry. Um, it'll show targeted growth of an additional five percent in proficiency in our students of color, our students with IEPs, and our multilingual learners. Um, our first key strategy would be to implement the Avid-focused note-taking strategy, um, that will help students with discussion, with, um, engagement, with reflection, and applying what they are learning into the classroom. Our second key strategy will be embed math fluency and problem-solving into science and other um, application, applicationable, um, content areas. And then our third key strategy would be to gather data from illustrative math and MAP to make data-informed decisions, providing feedback, um, and to set and monitor objectives to support student growth and achievement.
All right, and as you can see, our, our first quarter PD is gonna focus a lot, um, heavily on Panorama, because we use Panorama not just to track, um, data in attendance, but in all areas um, and, and to support our tiered MTSS practices, but also, um, to, um, collect, um, information on parent contacts so that we can make sure that our staff are doing this with fidelity and intentionality. Um, we'll do, um, a heavy training on the attendance verification process to make sure that all staff understand what that looks like and what the expectation is, so we can ensure that that is done with consistency. Um, focus note-taking strategy, we'll be training on that, because we do have some new staff coming in, and we wanna make sure that everyone's on the same page, and, and we don't wanna leave, leave anyone out. And then again, as an Avid, um, school-wide building, we wanna make sure that all of our staff are on board with that Avid framework, um, making sure that we understand the foundation is that relationship piece, so that we continue to grow and we have, um, student outcomes that we all wanna celebrate. Thank you. Any questions?
Go ahead.
I, looking at your math goal, you were concentrating only on math computation. That it was an increase in computation. You were looking at problem-solving as part of science and things like that. But I was wondering, were you only going to look at growth or proficiency in math computation?
Computation and fluency, yeah.
You know, other parts of math, problem-solving and...
That is, that is going, for now, we're, we're looking at computation, but as we are moving on to sixth grade, the test also begins to change and alter when it comes to MAP testing. So when they are leaving elementary school, they take the two-to-five math, and when they come into the sixth grade center, they'll be taking the six-to-eight ma, grade MAP test. So with that also, the different, um, areas of instruction also changes. So we're trying to go ahead and start off with computation and then add on fluency as time and, and as our students also start to get used to the rigor of math in the classroom as well. And then, Amani, if you wanna add anything else to that.
Yeah, I was gonna say exactly what she was saying. Um, we know that our students, um, will, they will be seeing this different version of the MAP test for the first time this year, and so we wanted to focus on one particular area. But as we go throughout the year to see how students are progressing in relation to this goal, we'll modify, um, the goal as needed and, um, to address, um, those other areas.
Anyone else have questions? Uh, thank you. Great job. And, uh, last up is, uh, Urbana High School.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Um, you get me tonight. Um, my SIP team worked on June second and third, and many of them asked about coming tonight, and I, transparently, I, I told them, no, stay home. It's summer. I got this, so you just get me tonight. So, hope it's okay. And so, um, this is the same format as all the other schools, and so, um, we're, go, oh, go ahead. So we're gonna not do that, and then we'll go ahead and jump straight into our goals for, um, this past school year. And so, our first goal was attendance. And at the end of last year, we had a sixty percent chronic absentee rate, and so our goal was to bring that down to about forty-five percent or less. We did not quite make that this year. However, we did make a dent in it. Um, our first semester goal was to get it down to about fifty percent. Um, our second semester goal was about fifty to forty-five percent. We ended the year at fifty-one percent. And so we did get a decrease, but not as much as we wanted for that. Um, and so, some key activities that we did do is we reviewed attendance procedures and protocols. We promoted daily attendance. We really focused on our SEL and our Avid strategies, and just really with our staff unpacking Panorama data, looking at what motivates our students and what can we do to get them in the building and to stay and to be in class. And so that is something that we will continue to work on as, when we talk about, um, our goals for this upcoming school year. Um, literacy, um, was another goal that we put forward for this year, and with literacy, last year we focused on attainment of informational text, and this year we switched it up to growth goals. And I am excited to hear that the middle school and sixth grade center are looking at attainment, so hopefully in a few years, we can switch to attainment, because right now our students at the high school are just all over the place. We have some significant gaps. And so, at the high school, we made the decision to stick with growth, and we are looking at five percent growth um, for our students from fall to spring. And so that is something that we're working with, just because we have our students all over the place. It's their last step before leaving us into the real world, and we wanna make sure we get them, um, best, in the best possible position to go forward with a clear plan and a clear vision going forward. And so we're looking at growth goals for now, and we want five percent growth for that. And so when we look at where we ended up this year, we set high lofty goals where we, uh, for our ninth graders, we wanted seventy-five percent uh, to be a five percent growth goal, seventy-seven for our sophomores, for our juniors, seventy-nine percent. And you can see that we did not quite make that for this year. Um, we ended up with forty-five percent for our ninth graders, forty-six for our tenth graders, thirty-eight for our eleventh graders. And again, that is looking at a five percent growth. And so, if we were just looking at growth period, we would be over eighty percent. But we want five percent growth, right? And so we're setting that high bar, that high expectation for ourselves um, for that, and so that is where we came in for this year. Another thing that we did um, was we really tightened up our protocols for MAP testing, um, with our staff and with our students. And so that was another contributing factor to where we fell with, um, our MAP data for literacy. Um, and then, again, as a staff, we're unpacking the data, we're looking at it, we're making it more embedded in what we do on the daily for that. And then, again, looking at PD and really utilizing Avid strategies, especially with WICER, and looking at the reading and writing, and along with query, inquiry and collaboration for that, um, to really support our literacy. For math, um, this year again, uh, we wanted to get a ten percent increase in growth, and we set some lofty goals for our three grade levels that we tested. Um, sophomores, uh, sorry, freshmen were eighty-six percent, sophomore seventy-seven, juniors were seventy-nine, and you can see that we did come in short for our MAP, uh, math growth goals for that. But again, we were looking at a ten percent increase based off of the data, and that's where we came in with, um, forty-nine percent for our freshmen, fifty-two for our sophomores, juniors thirty-three percent. And again, again, tightening the protocols for MAP testing, um, really looking at unpacking it, and really looking at key strategies with our staff, not just with our math department, but across the curriculum with all content areas, on how we can support mathematical strategies, um, in all content areas. And so when we look at root causes and reflections, um, a significant thing is absences and tardies play a huge role in high school. Um, that is something that we're continuing the battle. As you saw, we had fifty-one percent chronic absenteeism, and so that is something that we're gonna continue to work on, because we feel that's a huge, get our students in class, they will learn, right? And so that's something that we're gonna continue to work on. Um, inconsistent staff responses to behaviors, engaging all students in rigorous academic coursework, academic interventions. I'm so grateful for the changes that Dr. Ivory Tatum made for this upcoming school year with our tier-one teachers and our intensive teachers, so we can actually get some true interventions in place at the high school for our students. In particular, we implemented this year Read One Eighty, um, for our tier-three students who are really behind with reading, to try to move them into a place that they're better positioned, um, for when they leave us. And then again, really looking to implement a comprehensive SEL program, so I'm grateful that the district finally landed on a curriculum that we're gonna implement next year, that all our freshmen and sophomores will get um, through our academy course, which is like our advisory. Um, so our, uh, seven mindsets SEL curriculum will be implemented for, um, half our student body. Our juniors and seniors will be an as-needed basis, um, for students who are, um, struggling um, uh, with that social-emotional component. And then just overall student engagement is something that we're continuing to work on at the high school level. All right, so we'll go ahead and jump straight into our goals for next year. Um, for our attendance goal, we, uh, where we ended up this year was at fifty-one percent chronically absentee, so we're wanting to take that down to forty-four percent for next year. And then, um, with our SMARTY goal, with that equity piece, because I'm a huge proponent in looking at our minority groups and looking at our groups and really working to wrap around them. And so when we look at our Latina, Latinx, um, subgroup, their absentee rate was actually sixty percent. It was, um, the highest in our, in our building. And so we wanna take that down. We're gonna focus on, um, our Latinx students, and then our Black students were fifty-six percent chronic absentee. And so we're gonna work on bringing that, that number down as well. We're gonna do some intentional strategies, intentional work with them, just because we have to close those achievement gaps. We have to close that attendance gap for our students. And then some key strategies is we're gonna really, um, focus on our tier-one, which is we're gonna really work on that parent outreach, really figuring out with our families why our students are not there, what's going on, and really just trying to, to get to the root of that. Um, and then really making sure that we got a solid tier-two team that meets. We have that, but we're gonna continue that work. And the tier-three, really working with our SCA and wrapping around our students who are, um, our worst offenders for that. This year, we're adding a culture and climate goal. And it, as everybody knows, when I came, uh, two years ago, that was one of my, uh, key tasks, key missions, was to help restore a positive culture and climate, stabilize it, and I think we've done that, and we've had two years of good stability at the high school with regards to culture and climate. So now it's time to try to improve that data. And so looking at where the need is, based off of the data, the data is really trying to ex, to reduce the exclusionary discipline, and looking at out-of-school suspensions and expulsions. And our goal is to reduce that by twenty-five percent as a whole. And so that's gonna be our mission, that's gonna be the work we're gonna focus in on. And again, looking at that equity piece, looking at our students, um, our Black students and our students with an IEP, we're gonna focus in on our students, um, those students, and really looking at reducing that by about twenty percent, because they are obviously disproportionately represented in our exclusionary, um, discipline. And so we're really gonna wrap around, um, our students to make sure that we can keep them in school, in-class learning. And so we're gonna really hit with this, uh, restorative practices, um, educating, encouraging all staff and students to participate in restorative conversations. Um, really looking at the high school, we don't say PBIS, we say MTSS. And so we're really gonna look at some targeted behaviors that we see based off of data when we come back in August, but we already know it's going to be, uh, behaviors that are, tend to be avoidance at the high school. Um, so, uh, cutting class, going to restrooms, I mean, just, and so that's the biggest things that we're seeing. And so we're really gonna work on that. Uh, we're gonna put in check-in, connect, um, CECO, um, and so then we'll do stage groups as well. Um, and then our third strategy will be, um, mindsets, um, seven mindsets. And so we'll really work on that implementation for all our freshmen and sophomores. Literacy goal, um, we are gonna stay with growth, and we're gonna stay with five percent and try to really increase that based off of our numbers. This year, we, um, decided as a team to look at what was reasonable, and then for our equity, um, goal and our students, we are really going to look at our Black students and students with an IEP. And, um, our key strategies that cut across all content areas that we're really gonna work on, the high-yield strategies is summarizing and note-taking, setting objectives and providing feedback, and then questions, cues, and advanced organizers, which are also rooted in Avid strategies. Math, um, we are going to, again, from the data this year, we've set our goals for next year. And then for our, um, equity piece, our equity, uh, component to that, we are really going to focus in on our students with an IEP, because they have the largest gap. And so, and again, our strategies for math will be a summarizing and note-taking, setting objectives and providing feedback. And the difference from the literacy goals, we're gonna look at non-linguistic representations. And so with that, um, we are gonna really focus in on Avid, MTSS, Panorama, CHAMPs, and seven mindsets, and really looking as a school, what are our opportunity and expectation gaps that we see? What are the systematic things? What are the mindsets of staff? And really looking at tackling that, that, that me piece about why we have the achievement gap that we have, and really bringing that to the forefront to work with our staff. And that's all gonna be done through our uh, professional learning community work for this upcoming school year.
Uh, any members have a question?
Is CECO check-in, check-out?
Yes.
Okay.
And just, uh, one more closing thought with this. Yes, we have the school improvement plan. Yes, we're looking at culture and climate, math and literacy. But at the end of the day, as a high school, we're looking at that graduation rate, right? And so everything that we do is ultimately to increase that graduation rate. When I first came on, it was eighty percent. At the end of my first year, it was eighty-three percent, so we shifted it three percent. We're still, uh, computing the data, 'cause we have some seniors that are doing summer school. And so our goal is to, again, maintain or increase that graduation rate and have all our students with that four-year plan, so when they leave us, they know exactly what they're doing and where they're going.
I'm not familiar with the English or the reading classes that you have at, at the high school. How is that structured? So those students who are really not reading on grade level can get the individual attention that they have?
We do have, um, different levels. We have our on-track, and then we have the advanced track, the honors track. But we also have, um, courses where if a student does not pass, we have classes for them to fall back into, to take. We are implementing next year, um, some ALS, so students who are not, um, being successful will fall into that class to support them and then give them that attention that they need. And so we, we are implementing those interventions, and then we do have different tracks that they can offshoot to, to make sure that we correct that course as best we can.
That's for all four years for freshman?
Yes, there is a plan. It looks different at, at each grade level, but there is a plan.
Okay.
And there are different, um, op, options.
Great, thank you. So are those reading courses, um, basically, like, basic reading instruction? Or are they helping with the, um, like, the science class, the social studies class?
Yes, there is that, there's that cross-content. Like, for example, um, our sophomore class, it's World Studies, and then our juniors, American Studies.
Okay, and, um, the, now that we have our Spanish program,
Our dual language?
Yeah, the dual language, K through twelve, are there any, um, goals for the Spanish language yards?
Um, as a building, it's to maintain it and keep it going where it's going. Um, our enrollment is increasing, and so we are going to continue to work with Dr. Weemel to make sure that it's a strong program. And as you can see, that we had a high number of students that get the, still by literacy, and so we wanted to maintain that and keep that going.
Anyone else?
All right, and then, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Great job, everybody.
Moving on, our, our second administrative report this evening is, uh, district school improvement update from Chastity.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Christina K. Lewandowski, and we have a team here that's gonna present tonight, Chastity and John. So we are excited. Um, it's the end of the year, beautiful day, and we're going to start with providing you an overview of chronic absenteeism data. Hopefully everyone can hear me, okay? Chronic absenteeism data, uh, MAP data with math in. Chronic absenteeism data, MAP data with math in, reading, and SEL survey data. And maybe anything else you want to know about? Maybe we have the answer. All right.
And I'm going to drive from over here because there's some things that are interactive. Usually, I help people with interactive things from afar, but today I'm going to help from near. So, starting out with our chronic absenteeism data, so this is our data for the district and the schools for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So this was our last year data. At the end of our school improvement plan for last year, they set the chronic absenteeism goal for this coming year at thirty-four percent, which would have been down from forty-four percent the previous year. So we have our data from this year, and as you can see, over the course of the year, we did track it throughout the year, and it did dip below thirty-four at points in the year, and then rose kind of towards the winter and the end of the year and ended up at thirty-nine percent for the end of the year. And that yellow line there is the trend line for the year, which stayed relatively flat over the course of all the data. It kind of, you can see there was a little dip in the middle there. So this is more interesting also for me. This was our individual monthly data disaggregated by race. So here you can see for each individual month, how many students were chronically absent for that month. And as you can see, that black line in the middle is the district data. So there was kind of a trend of, over the course of the winter months, that December, January, February, March, that we had higher absenteeism during those months. There was also during the month of February, our data for our Hispanic students, which had been kind of in the middle of the other races, kind of spiked in that February month. And I think at one of our previous school improvement plans, people had kind of anecdotally mentioned that they were having some attendance students, problems with students in the kind of last week of school, just getting across the finish line. And you can also see that reflected in the data here, where the month of May had a higher chronic absenteeism, although not markedly so than the previous months. And did you have anything you wanted to add on that one?
No, you did it perfectly. I just think the February data is fascinating and how it relates to reality.
Yeah. And this is one more for the chronic absenteeism. This is the data by grade, by month. So here you can see kind of over the course of the year where the highest and lowest attendance issues were for individual grades. So let me move this up here. Kind of interestingly, well, like, in the start and middle of the year, the middle grades were doing a lot better. Kind of towards the end of the year, the middle school grades fell off, while some of the upper classes had more exams and things that they needed to be present for, so they were actually doing better towards the end of the year.
All right, so now we're going to move to, unless anyone has questions about, well, maybe we should take questions at the very end.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take it at the very end. All right, so now let's move to student achievement data using the assessment that we call MAP, that we do three times a year. And these are our results for spring. So we have the data divided up, similar to like a bell curve. And so what we want to see is the opposite of the bars that we see. So it starts with the low and then kind of curves this way, and we want to see the curve going the opposite way. That's what we want to see. And so when you combine the lowest quintile levels, which is high, average, and high, basically, that starts at the sixty-first achievement percentile level. And what, the reason why I'm bringing that up is because it's important, that helps with projecting how we're going to do on our Illinois Assessment for Readiness Test that we are mandated to take once a year. And so it gives us kind of a window, kind of an idea of how our students are going to perform on that test. And so let's go to the next one, and this is reflecting a different type of data. So the first one was achievement. Now let's talk about growth. Did our students grow? And the reason why it's broken up into four different parts is because we have fifteen-point-nine percent of our students who guaranteed met their projected growth goal and/or even exceeded it. So if the RIT score for a student was one-twenty-one, and the projected score would be for them to go up two points, and it was one-twenty-five, then they are included in that first bar graph. So that's what that means. Now, the yes with the asterisk underneath the bar is twenty-eight-point-four percent. Now, why does it have an asterisk? Because these students barely made their projection. And so we do email these reports home to all of our families, and so it is important that our families are looking at the projected growth and having those discussions with their students at home, with their child at home. And it could be simple as, you know, they barely made it between one to two points. And it could be, maybe they were just daydreaming, maybe they were just tired, who knows the reason why they barely made it? And then, this is really fascinating, the next bar says no, thirty-three-point-seven percent of these students almost made their projected growth goal. And they missed that goal by, again, one to two points, just one to two points. Maybe they were speed reading, maybe they were thinking they could just rapidly guess, and then they decided to concentrate. Who knows? But thirty-three-point-seven percent. So when you add the first three bars from left to right, that's over fifty percent of our students that could have made projected growth. I just want to make that as a point. And so what does that mean? That means we have to build a testing environment, we have to make sure our students are ready, we're giving them study skills, test-taking, strategy skills, that we're allowing them to practice, especially, think about it, first graders, think about kindergartners when they come in, and even all the way to middle and high school. So I just wanted to point that out.
And one more item of note, I know we mentioned this in the past, but especially for the new board members. So for the growth versus the achievement, in order to be moving higher on achievement, students, the yes and the yes star need to be, add up to more than fifty percent for us to be improving. If those add up to less than fifty percent, then we're not improving on the achievement.
That is correct. And so when you add those two bars together, yes and the yes asterisk, what do you get? You get less than fifty percent. All right, let's go to the next one. Student performance by achievement, this is language arts. Again, we want to see the bar going the opposite way. And when we combine the last two bars, that will give us an indication of how we may perform on IAR. And speaking of IAR, I almost forgot this, they are changing their targets. The state of Illinois decided that our targets were way too high when they compared the state to other states' assessment targets. And so we're really excited to see how that's going to look, not just for us, but across the state of Illinois. All right, next slide is the projected growth. And we have the, if you look at the no bar, again, thirty-five-point-five percent of our students almost made their projected growth by one to two points. So, and when you combine the yes and the yes asterisk bars, that is under fifty percent. Okay, let's go to the next. Oh, no, we're going to show something special.
Yeah, and I wanted to give Christina some credit for this. I think Member Hips Hixson, you'd asked about a data dashboard. Christina had generated this just out of the ether, which also lets you really drill down on MAP performance by basically anything. You had asked earlier about the dual-language program and how they're performing on math, so you can go right in here and say of our Spanish-speaking, Spanish-dual-language students, and you can see how they're comparing to the rest of the students that's across the whole district, but you can also kind of...
Oh, but John, you forgot the spark line.
Oh, yeah.
We need to start with the spark line. So can we get the DL data out of there for a minute? And the SDLS. Oh, right. So if you could point up to the spark line, this, I don't know why, but this tickles my fancy a little bit because it just is so cool, because it moves every time you pick a different type of data point. So right now, as a district, and by the way, this raw data, I always download the raw data from MAP the day after we get done testing. So it's concrete, it's in there, because what happens? Students move. As soon as students move, even the two days after, they're out of our portal, they're out of our MAP portal. So these, this data is reflecting the day after we tested in May, which would be May seventeenth, a Saturday. But anyway, the sparkle line there, nineteen, and for language arts, twenty percent. And then when we put in the DL, watch it change.
Yeah, and I'll go back, let's do, first, let's look at Yankee Ridge, the entire building. So this is everybody in all of the programs, and then if we select individual programs, we can see how things compare. So this is a great, amazing tool for administrators to look at as they're looking at their goals throughout the year, where they can kind of drill down on anything they want. They can also...
And then let's just define SDLS for...
Yeah, that was, we might make that a little easier for the administrators later. That's Spanish-speaking, Spanish-dual-language students. But also, if you wanted to look at incoming sixth-grade students, you can select current fifth-grade students and be able to kind of disaggregate all of the students from all of the buildings into one tool where you can kind of look at that. In another tab that has lots of student data, people can look at individual students for their buildings as well. And then I don't know if you wanted to kind of go through...
Just one more chart, just go all the way down, and they can see that it also affects the growth as well. If you wanted to see, well, how did our French-dual-language students that naturally speak French, how did they do? Did they meet their growth? How did our African-American students do? And so forth. So it changes every time you click. Interactive MAP. That's all I have to say about that.
Did you create that, or was that from?
I created it. She just asked for those at home. Did I create it? All right, next, oh, SEL data. John, are we ready to move on?
Yeah, let me, let me get that in a different way.
So while he's setting up, so Panorama, as was referenced by many of our principals this evening, which, by the way, bravo, they all did a really wonderful job, so proud of all of them and their teams. You have it?
Yeah, I just have to refresh. I think this was...
So we do surveys three times a year, and, yep, you're getting it there. And so we are, we always do really well when it comes to the topic called supportive relationships. And we have done Panoramas since 2021, and it, we usually land in like the eighty-ninth percentile. So our students really value the relationships they have with their teachers, with a special staff member in the building. So when I heard the check-in, check-out was going to be used tonight as a strategy to connect students, that's done with a supportive adult, with a supportive staff member, and the data does reflect that. Now, we have self-management is a very important topic, and the slide that you are seeing now reflects students in K-two. K-two, what happens there, since they're five, six, and seven years old, the teachers are the ones that ask the questions. And so it's the teacher's perception. And so we have self-management that increased, that had a nice little bump there. And I'll talk about self-management after the next two slides a little bit more. Let's go to the next one. And this is grades three, five. You can see here that self-management increased again for this group of students. And I know you see like the arrow going down by one point for supportive relationships. Please keep in mind that they are measuring from one benchmark to the other. So from winter, that group went down by one point. However, again, overall, since twenty-one, they, that topic still is strong. And that says a lot about our district. That's a positive thing. Let's move on to the next. And the six through twelve, I mean, that's half of our student population, right? And so their voices have been heard. And we have, in these three topics, all of the topics went down, and we heard from the principals that there's some work to do and it's going to continue to do some work there. And all the principals stated that they were going to dig into the data. So when you do, you're not going to be able to do this now, but when principals and teams are able to get into this data and explore more, they can get into the priority groups of students, even like the grade levels, the socioeconomic status of students, and even pinpoint the question, like, what exactly is going on with my students for this data to go down? And so that's what I heard tonight, that that's what they're going to do, and I'm excited for that. Now, what I wanted to say about self-management, why is that so important? So the research says that self-management, there is a crystal-clear correlation, that if you can get that self-management up in your students, not only will it decrease chronic absenteeism, but it will increase student achievement. Why is that? Because it is related to how students write goals, and if you, students are writing goals, they are reflecting on their learning. And so we are hopeful this year that all teachers are going to have students write goals, and you're probably thinking, oh, kindergarten can't do that. Yes, they can. Kindergartners can write goals as well.
It's actually one of our portfolio of graduate skills.
There you go.
So we'll be starting that in kindergarten. And Seven Mindsets has life plans that they write. They call it a life plan instead of a goal.
That is awesome, how everything is connected.
All the way to kindergarten.
And it's really amazing to me, I love data, that we just have such a wealth of data in the district, and like, we're generating these tools to use it. We also, it's still preliminary, so we're not going to show it, but Christina also made a similar one for IAR data, that once it's the actual data, we'll be able to share with principals.
Okay, I think we're done.
Yep.
Okay, first of all, thank you to John and Christina for providing that comprehensive overview of where we're ending at the school year. What I'm going to share is more aligned to, at the beginning of...
What I'm going to share is more aligned to, at the beginning of the school year, we shared district goals. And so some of that was within their slideshow as well, but I'm just giving the numbers. So you should have like a little two-pager handout where I'm sharing where we ended the year specifically on those goals. Before we get to that, I wanna say again, thank you to you both. I think that this year has been a growing year for us all, trying to reinvent some practices and school improvements. So thank you to the board and Dr. Ivy Tatum for giving us that leeway and freedom to kind of tweak some things. As you can see, the school improvement process is strengthened this year, and I was like so grateful for teams. So shout out to all the principals and teams who are coming and bringing their teams and just producing such great work. They worked really hard on June first and second, and so I'm really excited about where they're going this year. And I'm just excited they were here and that they have so much information to give you all. And so a plan already in place for quarter one PD to really kick off student growth and like staff collective efficacy as well. So thank you to my colleagues, my boss, you all as well, but the teams as well for doing such hard work. So please, as you know, continue to give us feedback this year on how things are going that we can tweak so we can continue to improve our continuous improvement process as well. And so I'll share this, but I'm so glad that we also have strategic planning goals as well. And so next year, the capacity you will see us all in is probably giving reports on the strategic planning goals. So we're also excited about that as well. So as John stated, we ended our year, our goal was by spring of 2025, chronic absenteeism in the district will decrease from forty-four, it was supposed, is an error, excuse me, forty-four percent to thirty-four. We ended at thirty-nine percent. Then when we go to MAP growth, we created a very lofty and rigorous goal to increase first through, for ELA, first through tenth graders, will have an increase of fifteen percent. We ended the year, last year, at forty percent of those first through tenth graders meeting their goal. And then at the end of this year, we ended at around forty-three percent. And so there was a three percent increase for this year. As you can see, there was some dips. We started off very strong in the fall with forty-nine percent, and then in the winter, forty-eight percent, and we ended the year at around forty-three percent. And that's reflective of what you heard in the school improvement plans, that there were dips throughout the year as well. And then in math, we also wanted a fifteen percent increase. Math, we included kindergarten because they do, they are being assessed in kindergarten once it starts in the, in, in the winter. And so you'll see we went from fifty-four percent to fifty-three percent, and then we ended the year at forty-five percent. And so at the end of last year, we were at forty-two percent. So there was about a five percent increase in our overall district growth. I shared a couple of months ago, I think it was back in January or February, our IAR results. And as Christine and John shared, we do have preliminary results that, of course, we are not allowed to share just yet, but we're very hopeful that we did make some progress in increasing the proficiency of our priority groups. And then the last piece on the last page, I know we didn't directly have a, a discipline per se goal, but as you know, we are cited by the state ISB, so there is a discipline improvement plan. And so we thought it was important to make sure that you all know how we ended the year and why you will see some of the kind of targets and goals set by schools as well to, to help decrease this. So as of the end of the year, we had one thousand two hundred and ninety-four minor referrals, eight thousand one hundred and forty-three major referrals. And then when we look at just suspensions for the whole district, there were nine hundred and forty-three. Two hundred and sixty of those came from elementary. Four hundred and eighty-two of those came from sixth through eighth UMS. Two hundred and one came from the high school, and then total, we had nine expulsions. And so what I will say is too, that all of the kind of task, targets, and key strategies that align with our district school improvement plan, you will see in the, in their school improvement plans, but also our strategic planning, right? We thought about MTSS, using panorama to look at data. We have I meet with those who oversee culture and climate or discipline practices at school. And so there's already work being done, especially Beth Ladd and I, who's the executive director of Student Services. We have a meeting with the middle school next week to really start digging into some of this data as well because of course we wanna go in the year being proactive versus reactive. And so we're already meaning to come up with a plan to ensure that this number is reduced. Overall, this is a reduction from some data from last year, but of course, we know that's not good enough. We wanna keep going because we want our kids to feel that sense of belonging, and we don't want any of our students to be excluded from classroom or activities within the building. And so that is to share out about discipline data, and hopefully there is more to come. Any questions about any of this?
Any questions?
Question for you, based on you talking about the testing environment. We have, I don't know what the percentage is, but there certainly would be many students who would need a quiet testing environment or breaks or whatever. So how do you accommodate for that, and do you need a IEP or a 504 plan in order to receive that? If a, if a teacher knows that a lot of student that might need it, is that something that they can just do? Or do they have, their parents have to go through the process of getting the IEP?
Well, that's such a great question. So we have, I'll, I'll just put it out there. King's, yeah, King School, for example. So King School, what they learned was, some, some of the staff didn't know exactly what you just said. Can I remove a group of students who are ESL students? And I think they're, they started the year here, new to the country as well. And so they were like, you know, for the spring benchmark, we wanna just put like three students in a group and test them separately. Is that okay? And they called me up and I said, Dad, I'm like, yeah, you can do that. That is awesome. Thank you for doing that. So yes, you don't need an IEP to do that. If the teacher recognizes that that is a need, that they need a smaller environment, they need a quieter environment to test the students. It really comes down to the principal and their team to be strategic with, when it comes to assessments. It, it comes to planning ahead. And last, it comes to when the window is from April twenty-eighth to May sixteenth, hopefully everyone's healthy as far as staff, and everyone understands what to do. Everyone has the schedule. Everyone knows this is the days that fifth, third, fourth, and fifth grader testing. So I'm gonna be quiet in the hallways. It's, it's, everyone's on board. Everyone's on the same page.
Can I add? So what Christine is talking about is the testing environment. What you're talking about are accommodations also. So yes, but in terms of things like having the test read to them, or having extended time, or things like that, they do have to have an IEP or a 504 plan.
Yep, that's part two of your question. Accommodations specifically, like Dr. Ivy Tatum said, yes, they would need to go through the process.
But for English language learners, they're, it's okay to give them extra time. They don't need an IEP. So it would seem that, you know, testing a few English language learners apart from, and I'm wondering how, how much professional development do people have about what is allowed in the way of accommodation?
That's a good question, too. So at the beginning of the year, the principal gives a refreshing training class or part of their staff meeting. It could be like ten to fifteen minutes because maybe you only have one new staff member, right? But it's still nice to review everything about how to take this specific assessment, including what to do about students who have accommodations or students who have any kind of special needs, right? So that's one way PD is involved. The second way is I create this NWEA MAP manual, and it's updated every single year. And I used to not print it, and because I'm trying to save paper, right? We all trying to save the environment. However, we do have a lot of staff members that don't really like electronics. So the test is so important that I'm like, okay, so since twenty-one, I've only printed it once. So this year I did print it, and it was the second time printing it. And so it did go out in the beginning of the year, but did it go out to, to teachers who started in like November or January? No, unless that building took care of them. But that's another way, because in this manual, it talks about how to take care of students with special needs. There's an accommodation page with, for ELL students, and how to take the test, how to access the practice test, how to create a testing environment. Yep.
So for IER, we have to actually do a sign-off, that everyone has to sign off that they've read the book and they've reviewed the practices of how they're supposed to give it as a standardized test, so.
And they go through training as well with that, and the principals too.
I have my question again about an projected growth. What is projected growth? Is projected growth one year? So if you're working at a first-grade level, your projected growth would be, by the end of the year, you'd be working at second-grade level.
Okay, now you're talking levels. Now you're, now you're not talking growth anymore. Those are two different things. So let's talk about growth first.
Okay.
So if I'm a first grader, taking the reading test for the very first time, specifically MAP, then I am not going to have a projected growth goal because there's nothing, there's no data to compare how I'm going to perform. There's no data there, because when I was in kindergarten, I did not take the test. Now, it's winter, right? It's December, and I'm still a first grader. Well, now I do have a projected growth goal. And for first grade, the RIT could be, let's say it's for reading, one sixty-five point eight-five. That's what I'm expected. I'm expected to get to a RIT score of one sixty-five point eight-five. And what does that mean? That means I'm at least reaching an average level of fifty percent. I'm at least reaching the fiftieth percentile. Remember in my slideshow, I gave you five different quintile levels, right? So the first grader creates the goal to be about five points, to increase their RIT score by five points. So when you're talking about growth, you're comparing one growth event to the other. And now this first grader has a test, test results, which is in fall, and now they can look to see if they increased their levels.
And I may be the only one that doesn't understand.
And I think to answer maybe, so there's different growth targets for different periods? So there's a fall to fall, fall to winter, fall to spring?
So that first grader who got one sixty-five point something would be expected to get one seventy point something. That would be the growth?
No. So first, it's a norm reference assessment. So one sixty-five point eight-five is just saying to everyone that that is the average, right? Just the average. And so if the first grader for fall reached a... All right. If the first grader in the fall reached a growth goal of one fifty-six, let's say, the expectation is a one fifty-five, by the way. It's a one fifty-five in first grade in the fall. But they reached one fifty-six, okay? So they went above the fiftieth percentile, barely, but they did. And so they can create a goal, and that goal could be for growth, could be five point five points, maybe less rounded to six. I predict this student is gonna be increasing their RIT from fall to six, up six points, all right? So one fifty-six plus six points is one sixty-one, right? Unless my math is wrong. Is it one sixty-one? All right, so one sixty-one, let's remember that number. And the expectation for winter, or, yeah, this is reading, for winter was one sixty-five. So it didn't really, the growth goal didn't surpass that fiftieth percentile. However, that's why it's important that it's individualized as well. So every goal is individualized. So if it's one sixty-one, they missed it by four points. However, if they reached it by one seventy, then they surpassed that projected growth goal. And like John mentioned earlier, the goal is not only for students to reach that projected growth goal, but it's to exceed it. If we exceed that growth goal, then that's how we're going to close the achievement gap. That's how we're going to increase our student achievement. I feel like I need a chalkboard to, to, to explain it, but basically...
I guess my question is, how do we know if everybody, if all the students make their projected growth goal? And that growth goal, and let's say I'm a second-grade student, and I'm not reading very well or not doing math very well, so I'm really working at a lower level, which is a level I grant you, not a growth, growth score. But if the growth goals are, how, if the growth goal does not push the student more than a grade, more than a year's worth of learning, you know, over the year, how do we, how do we know we're going to improve our, our achievement?
So that goes back to the fiftieth percentile and above. And I actually have a, a one-pager that might help with that. So let me...
So while she's pulling that, MAP is a norm reference, nationally normed test. So we don't set the RIT scores. The RIT scores are determined individually for every student based on their performance on the test. And, and all of that is determined, again, through MAP and through their norming the test nationally when they compare our kids to kids who take MAP all over the country. So does that make, okay.
So one thing you're saying is how are we closing the achievement gap, right? How are we making sure kids are getting on grade level? So when you look at school improvement plans, anybody who is setting a bar above that fifty percent of students are meeting their growth, golf, growth, goals, excuse me, are really attacking that. Anybody who you see who is setting achievement goals versus growth goals, like sixth-grade center said, is really looking at how are we making sure our students are getting at grade level or above versus just the growth that they're making.
And they also, to close the gap even further, they set a goal for all students, but then they also pushing their priority groups to exceed that by even five more percent. That's how we are going to be able to create those baby steps to close the achievement gap, is to... is to make sure our students with IEPs, our black students, our Latino students are even growing more than their Asian and white peers who are in a lot of cases already on grade level.
And the parents also get individualized reports, uh, emailed home to them that have their students' like, uh, growth and achievement both on a graph that gives them kind of an idea of like what they can do to like help their student. Yeah.
So do the specs of the test tell you? Does it compare at all to achievement? Or to like the IER or? Because usually tests, norm reference tests will do that. Now, I haven't read any specs for years and years.
So there's a thing called the Lincoln Report, Linking Report, L-I-N-K-I-N-G. You can Google it right now, NWEA Linking Report. And it is like a lot of pages, right? And this, I know it's hard to see or, but this is one example of how the MAP test aligns with the IER test. So on the IER test, you have what's called scale scores. If students reach a scale score of at least seven fifty, they are basically meeting, um, achievement. They're meeting that and or exceeding. When we, um, John, go up the previous slide. When you are looking at MAP, when you're looking at the high average bar and the high bar, that's the connection to our state assessment. This, because that starts at the sixty-first percentile and a scale score of seven fifty for IER starts between sixty-first and seventy-fourth percentile. Does that make sense? Yeah.
And I would offer as well, I know this might not be everybody's particular topic of interest, but if there's any time you want to come to the district office and take a super deep dive into all the MAP data, I know Christina and I would be happy to like delve deep, deep into the data.
And remember Hickson, just the recent email where I gave you like the screenshots of the data. So the top portion was growth and the bottom portion was achievement. So if you wanted to look at like particularly the groups we were looking at and how they're achieving, you would just look at that bottom portion of those pictures too. And that would give you a percentage of students who are above that sixty, um, that sixty, sixty-first percentile to say, okay, these students are on grade level and should be like proficient when we, um, take the I, IER assessment.
Yeah, yeah, John, I'm, I think we're getting tired of these microphones. They're, they're, they're all dying on us. Maybe like as a goal for next year, we can look into what it would take to replace this whole system with something that's like.
Oh, I like that idea.
We've had these, we've had these mics for over twenty years. So.
I like that. Can I, oh, sorry, go ahead. No, you go ahead. I don't want you to forget your question.
I wrote it down, so. It's okay. So on, uh, the Panorama survey six through twelve, there was only one thousand one hundred and thirty-five, um, responses. How can we get more students to respond so it'd be more accurate?
It's musical microphones. I'm glad you pointed that out because before Mr. Guzman, we had even less response rates. I'm telling you, him and his team, they have increased the response rate. Like they are not joking around when it comes to taking the survey. They, they, they motivate students, they announce it. Um, so they really, really try everything they can to get students to take the survey. Um, and I know that, um, they're going to continue to strategize um, because hearing their students' voice, very important to them. Um, just like how they're so excited about, uh, creating the Equity Committee. Um, that's with some really, really fascinating, brilliant young adults. So they want to hear their student voices, so they will increase it.
But Lindsay, you bring up a good point. It should have been closer to about twenty-one hundred students and so we're about a thousand students off. So we do need to, um, make sure that our, so the way it's supposed to have work is the students take the survey test in class with their, so it isn't like something we send out and they do it on their own time. They're supposed to do it with a teacher during one of the class periods. And so that is an area that we need to make sure that our staff members, the week that they're giving the test, are actually giving it per the direction of their administrators. So that's something I think our, our principals are going to have to follow up and hold people accountable if they're not doing that. So like at the high school, they might say, okay, period one, whatever class you're in today for first hour, you are supposed to be giving Panorama. And so, um, that is something that we need to work on in terms of holding the folks accountable who are or are not doing that.
And I would say, so this year I was, uh, I was overseeing student voice and culture and climate. So that has all the secondary administrators on that team. And when we looked at the Panorama survey data, we definitely had those discussions and making shifts for next year. Uh, this past year, it was given in PE classes and they noticed a lot of kids were opting out. And so we're making a shift of what classes it's given in to make it a more smaller testing environment so the teacher can really share why. Um, and also through the Student Voice Equity Committee. Um, high school is currently, but we're building that out to be, um, to include sixth, seventh and eighth as well. We're ensuring that the students know the rationale and why we take this as well so their student, their voices could be heard. So we're trying to shift some things, some adult practices, but also empowering students to know that it is important that they take it so we know how they feel and gain that feedback.
And two of the major skills are part of our new portrait of graduate, social awareness and self-management. So we're hoping that the more we teach our students about what those skills mean and, and how they learn those K through twelve, it'll help make that, um, data more meaningful for them too. So basically what Chastity just said too.
And one last point, and that's what Lori just gave you guys. Um, just to reiterate the point of the growth percentile. So when Chastity mentioned fifty percent, just remember it's percentile and, um, take a look at the students on the right side of the flyer that was passed out. See the third bullet point where it says fifty? So when they reach the fiftieth percentile, that's just average growth. So the whole grade level reaches just fifty, at the fiftieth percentile. So anything above that, that's what we want. And to reiterate again, the district goals, um, yes, we did better overall from last year to this year, but we only hit at like forty-eight, at the forty-eighth percentile. So we were two percentiles short of even hitting the average. Does that make sense as a whole group? So I hope this helps a little bit too.
That's a good discussion. Uh, any other questions? Nope. All right. Oh. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Our last administrative report this evening is on our social studies curriculum. Uh, Jessica Bradford.
It's not working, okay. Uh, so I'm here to talk about the social studies curriculum, which I'm super excited to present to you, um, this evening. Um, so, uh, Urbana Middle School, uh, grade six, seventh and eighth. Um, we started having a discussion back in March with the whole social studies department about, um, possibly looking at new curriculum to pilot. Um, and after picking several different curriculums to pilot, we discovered that the current curriculum that they're using, which is TCI, um, they have updated their curriculum to a two thousand and twenty-three version. And after looking at that presentation, um, they really decided they didn't want to pilot anything because they really like TCI. The curriculum they use for social studies, it's just way outdated. So currently sixth grade, uh, has the two thousand and nineteen version. Um, and then seventh and eighth grade have two thousand and two. So it is very outdated, yeah. Um, and actually if you, that was one of the feedbacks from the strategic plan is working on updating our curriculum and making it more rigorous for our science and social studies. So, um, so when we looked at the TCI curriculum, teachers have been supplementing, uh, their current TCI curriculum because all the mandates that we have to teach. Um, so they've kind of taken the TCI curriculum that they have and they've had to add to it, they've had to supplement it and create and add to the units. But what the beauty about the new updated TCI program um, that we're suggesting, um, to adopt is that, um, it's online. So currently teachers or, and students do not have online access. And so, um, teachers would have online access to TCI along with students. And so students would have online, the online books for TCI and it would be the newest version. Um, and, um, we are ordering extra, so that we're one-to-one, right? With student Chromebooks, so they would have access to the books online. Um, and then we would order extra books to keep in the classroom for, in case those students who like forgot their Chromebook or their Chromebook is, uh, not working. Um, but this curriculum, if you look at the, how it's been updated, I'm so, I'm so excited. And I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not a history person. That's my least favorite subject. But when I, we were looking through this demo and looking with all of the updates, I was really excited to learn about history and that takes a lot for me to be excited about history because I'm just not, it's not my favorite subject. But they, the strategies that they use are Marzano strategies. And if you know Marzano, he has excellent strategies that, so all of these strategies and activities that they use come from Marzano strategies. So that number one made me super excited. Um, it's in several different languages. So as we know, we're very diverse and we have a diverse student population. So they can take this curriculum and teach it in any language, any language. Like, so that was another big point to this. And then the, you can differentiate the reading level. Many different levels of students. So, um, you can differentiate the reading, um, and assigning to students based off of their levels. And so that's fantastic. Um, there's just so many perks to purchasing and adopting this curriculum. Uh, teachers, um, can, can, um, and it's all updated to the Illinois mandates that we're supposed to teach for history. So that's another exciting piece. But teachers can give these assessments online. They can change the assessments. The assessments are, can be read to students. And then the data is automatically populated, so it's right there for teachers to see. Um, because students can take the test online and then the data is automatic and it groups it into standards and it tells teachers what to do with the data. Um, it is, it is fant, it is fantastic. Um, they have games in there that students can play. They have, um, field trips, virtual field trips that students can take for history. Um, if you look on here, there's, like I said, video activities. Um, it's just updated. There's just so many great features. And, um, I am really excited of what this is going to look like for our teachers and for our students. Um, like I said, it got me excited and that takes a lot for me with history. But, um, it's, I highly recommend it.
So our ask this evening is normally, Jessie finished with the curriculum, um, committee that she was working with the department just recently. And normally we don't ask you to vote on something the same night that we bring it to you. Um, but since this was going to be such a huge upgrade for sixth, seventh and eighth and we have the money in our current budget to purchase the curriculum now instead of waiting until August, um, we were hoping it is on as an action item for eleven point one that, um, because we didn't switch to a different, um, program or a different company, it basically is just updating what we currently have, that the board would be willing to approve that tonight without the two-week waiting period. In this instance, this is our last meeting, we wouldn't be able to get a vote until August. So, um, again, I know it is not our practice to do this, but we would really appreciate it if you consider approving that um, so she can work with the team to get all the resources that they need now and get people using it and looking at it over the summer.
So, ready for next questions?
Yeah.
Um, so what's the additional spend?
Oh, Jessie, yes, that, yeah.
The, the amount.
How, how much are we paying for this?
Sixty-nine thousand for three years.
Okay.
For all, for all three grade levels. It includes, yeah, online for, online teacher access, student access, um, brief professional development training. Um, and we're ordering a hundred student, like, hard books that go along with it, so.
Yeah.
Jessie?
Yes.
How, how does that compare to the other, um, curriculums that you were going to possibly look at?
They didn't even compare, honestly.
As far as cost?
Oh, um, it was, we didn't even look at cost for other curriculums because we just didn't pilot it to look at it. But for us to get three years for sixty-nine thousand dollars for a curriculum, I can tell you that I just put in a proposal today just for like a math intervention program and it cost me, it, it was forty-five thousand dollars and it was just for a year. So to get a three-year cur, updated curriculum for sixth, seventh and eighth for teachers and all students for sixty-nine thousand dollars, I think that's a heck of a, heck of a deal.
No, there, there's roughly a thousand students in the middle school, right? You do the math, it's like seventy dollars a student. You can't, you can't buy a textbook for that.
Yeah, you can't, yeah. And it's giving us online digital and student textbooks. So I was pretty, pretty happy with, um, the deal that they gave us.
So the curriculum is, is it, was it cover history, world history?
Yeah, so there's like, there's, so sixth grade, I think, teaches like ancient history. I don't, seventh grade does like world history and then eighth, there's like modern day history. So, um, so they have, um, they're, that's what they use and they have that. And then what's great is, um, for seventh grade, we have to teach civics for a semester.
That's what I was going.
But we don't have to purchase the extra civics package with that because what TCI has already that the seventh grade teachers are teaching, they have civics embedded into it. So that was like another perk, um, is that we didn't have to purchase an, an extra, um, curriculum for seventh grade, like two curriculums for seventh grade. It's, the civics is embedded into what they teach.
I was concerned about, you know, we need more civics.
Yeah, yeah, it's embedded into that seventh grade. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes. Um, can students still take the test on paper? Do they have to do it online?
No, they don't have to.
And then when would we be implementing this?
Starting in August.
Okay.
It's a, so the training, so the teachers have already, like I said, they've been looking at this since March. Um, and they have had access, a demo account. And so they've had access to go in and start exploring with it. Um, so, um, we've done that from like March to May and been looking, um, at the TCI components online. Um, but we also would get a two-hour training, um, to start out with, um, for our teachers. And then, um, embedded into TCI are like modules that teachers can take throughout the year. And there's videos that teachers can watch if they ever have a question. Like all these training modules and videos are, um, teachers have access to it online in addition to the two-hour PD session that they provide. And then there's frequent check-ins throughout the year with the company, just to see how we're doing.
The sixty-nine thousand included the PD and the training, right? So that is even another reason why it's.
I'm telling you, it's a no, a no-brainer to do it, yes.
We need to do it, yes.
Yeah, I'm guessing that's, it's like an introductory price to kind of get us.
Yeah, yep.
Keep us at the best.
But it's, it's a good deal. Anyone else? All right, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This is up for, on the agenda as an action item later on. Speaking of action items, let's move on to our consent agenda. Ten dot one, our minutes from the April seventeenth executive session, May twentieth business meeting, May twenty-seventh district parent teacher advisory committee, the June third study session, and the June fifth special meeting for module number three. Ten dot two, our, our bills and checks, ed fund bills to the tune of five point three million dollars. Operation and maintenance fund bills for eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. Bond and interest fund bills for seven hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Transportation fund bills for five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. IMRF and social security for a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Working cash bonds for two point four million dollars. School facility occupancy tax for eighty-seven thousand dollars. Working cash for thirty thousand dollars. Tort for seventy thousand dollars. Life safety levy for seventy thousand dollars. Payroll, salary, and benefits for seven point eight million dollars. And urban and adult education for a hundred and three thousand dollars. There's a long list of personal items in our packets that are typical for this time of year. Ten dot five, our interfund loans from ONM to working cash for one million dollars. IMRF to working cash for four hundred thousand dollars. Tort to working cash, four hundred thousand dollars. Transportation to working cash for one hundred thousand dollars. The permanent transfer, approval is also requested. The transfer interest as of June thirtieth, this is a permanent transfer of funds. Amount of transfers will be in the actual amounts of interest earned through June thirty and the end of our fiscal year. Interest earned in the working cash and bond interest funds, we permanently move to the education fund, which the Board of Education deems to be the fund most in need of such interest. This is something we do every single year. Ten dot six, our approval for June bills for payment. So since we're not meeting in July, we're requesting authorization for the bills that come in during, for the June bills that are paid in July. Ten dot seven is a resolution declaring intent to retain interest earnings and interest and not to accumulate as principal. Described in the interfund loans section. And ten dot eight is a resolution authorizing direct sale or disposal of personal property. This is Deep W Wiley and UHS library books, A Bolster Swing, A Moon Swing, Thirty Broken Hurdles, Family Guide to Second Step, and Preschool, Kindergarten, Second Step. That's the entirety of our consent agenda. Does anybody wish to have an individual item removed from the consent agenda? Sorry? There's a twenty Broken Hurdles, so that's, that's part of that resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property, okay. If no one wishes to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, any comments, questions, discussions on consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Amarabu?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf?
Yes.
Moving on to our individual items. First up, eleven dot one is our social studies curriculum. Is there a motion for the floor?
I move to approve the, to acquire the new social studies curriculum.
Second.
Moving to second, and any further questions, comments, discussion? Roll call, please.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Amarabu?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Eleven dot two is appointment of the twenty-two-five IASB delegate assembly. So this is at the AAA conference, the IASB general body meets and votes on proposed, on basically how the entire group lobbies the legislator for, for different things. Sherry was, did this for us last year. I guess, who's kind of committed to going to the conference this year? Okay, does anybody want to, want to take this on?
That's great, I'll do it.
Awesome.
Yeah, she enjoyed it a lot.
That's, that's awesome. Then, then I will formally make a motion to nominate Sherry to be our representative at the delegate assembly. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to seconded, any further comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eleven dot three is renewal of our insurance. Mary Ann, could you provide context for the board, please? And you don't have a mic?
Yeah, this is something that we do every single year. So we go through, we work with USI and they are our like broker and then they provide us insurance. So we're gonna be continuing with I C R M T. Sorry, there's a lot of acronyms, so bear with me. And then, so the package price for that is gonna be like five, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And then you can see on your memo what that includes. And then we also carry standalone policies for cyber liability and workers' compensation. And you will notice in your packet, like part of the increase of thirty-two thousand is because it's a two-year and so we pay it upfront the first year and so it's, this year we're paying it up again. So last year, it's a little, it's a little bit higher than last year's because we pay for that environmental liability.
It's less of a jump than we've seen in other years, though.
Correct.
All right, is there a motion for the floor?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Amarabu?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes. Eleven dot four is our Board of Education twenty-five, twenty-two-six schedule, which we hammered out at our last meeting. Is there a motion for the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Is it moving to seconded? Any questions, comments, discussion on the dates we agreed to in oral, orally in the last meeting? Lori, you have a question?
No, I just wanted to have a chance to look over the dates. He just had to pass, you know, so he, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be.
Typically, we meet the first and third Tuesday, but there are two months that we had to change that because of a holiday or a vacation day. So otherwise, it's pretty common that it's first and third.
All right, can't remember if this, let's do a roll call, can't remember if it's a roll call or not. So this is, let's go do a roll call.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Amarabu?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Motion. Motion passes. Eleven dot five is our tentative district budget, which we discussed in detail at our, at our last meeting. Is there a motion for the floor?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to seconded. Any questions from, since our last meeting on the district budget, which, go ahead.
Since the last presentation, are there any changes or anything that, that you could foresee?
And we did get information about our Title II funding and as of right now, but even that is still kind of up in the air. But right now, there's no Title II funding, which is usually used for our professional development and kind of the more focus on the teachers. So, but right now, we're looking at zero for that. So we are seeing some impact on the federal dollars. But I haven't seen anything from like IASB or anything like that that has given us any updates here recently.
Thank you. Again, this is very, very tentative, especially this year. If there's no further comments, discussion, a roll call vote would be in order.
Member Amarabu?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Member, Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Vote passes. And again, this is our, eleven dot six is our tentative urban and adult education budget. From, that was, we didn't really discuss it in detail last time, but it was in our packets and it's.
That's, and I didn't know how you typically vote on it. So historically, it looks like it's been two different line items. So that's why we separated it. But it was, with, like their information was with ours last time, but we didn't really present on it because theirs is even more tentative than ours and it's really just kind of rolled over from FY twenty-five into FY twenty-six until they get more information.
Yeah. Is there a motion for the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moving to seconded, any, any further questions, comments, or discussion?
The only thing I want to state is that I noticed on the personnel, I'll list tonight, that there were several employees that are off the rift and are included. So that's good to see that, that the program's gonna go forward, so.
That's awesome news, all right. If there's no other questions or comments, a roll call vote is in order.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Amarabu?
Yes.
Motion passes, concludes our action items for the evening. There is no call for future special executive meetings, so we're not gonna. Well, we have an executive session after, after the conclusion of tonight's open session, but we're not gonna meet again until August. Superintendent's report?
Okay, so very quickly, just one slide that has a couple of important dates. I know we have some incoming sixth grade families here at the table, so you'll be interested in these dates as well. So Ben and Luke and Lindsay all have incoming sixth graders, so exciting. We set the open house events. We are going to do the official ribbon cutting. We, I invited Tony Sanders, our state superintendent, and he was going to try to come, but he has to be in Springfield now, but he committed to coming and walking through our dual language, because he's a huge proponent of dual language programming. So he wants to visit Yankee Ridge Multilingual and then the sixth grade center as well. So August eighth, we set that week specifically after our discussion last week. Most of the board members, you guys all said you were in town that first week of August, so we thought it would be a good time to make sure board members could be there as well. The first event is going to be focused on students and families. And we have some ideas. Ms. Carr and I have talked a lot about some raffles and some ways to really incentivize to get the students there and some activities that the students could do on the night of the ribbon cutting to kind of memorialize them as the first incoming class of sixth graders. That will be Friday, August eighth at five-thirty. And then I've had so many people from the community ask, when are we having our open house? So they can come view the building. And so we're gonna do that at a separate night because we really wanted to be about our kids and families first. But on Monday, August eleventh, we're gonna just open the building for an hour and staff won't need to be there, but we'll have other people available to just give tours. And so people from the community can kind of drop in during that hour. So those are our, our two open house events for the sixth grade center. We are moving back to doing something we haven't done in several years. Actually, we haven't done this since I was deputy superintendent, is a district welcome back to school night. We have really been focusing, because of all the changes the last couple of years, on sending our families to the schools to acclimate themselves, acclimate themselves to the new, their new schools and new communities. But this year, we really want to bring everybody in to the fold as a district and really kind of, kind of bring us back together around our new strategic plan and our new, our motto of being stronger together. So we're gonna have a welcome back to school night and community resource fair on the grounds of UMS and UHS. We did this, we used to do it years ago where we would have food, activities. We're gonna invite a lot of our community resource folks out to have tables set up. We'll kick off our mindset of the month, which is part of seven mindsets. And we're gonna actually do a mindset of the month for the community as well and involve our bus drivers and, so everyone in Urbana will know when our, what our mindset is that we're practicing for that month in our whole community. And we also are going to use it to really encourage our youth to come out to UHS activities when we have things. All of our students start off, like you saw at early childhood, most of them, not all of them, but a large number of our kiddos start with us as three-year-olds or five-year-olds. And they're with us through their whole school career and they all end up at UHS. So we really wanna instill, one of our values is pride and belonging. And we really wanna kick off talking about school pride and community pride and district pride at this welcome back night. So we're gonna have our athletes from the fall sports introduced. And after we have our food and visit all the community resources, we're gonna invite everybody to go into the stadium and meet all of our fall sports athletes and go in and enjoy our UHS activities there, too. We don't have all of the back-to-school nights for the elementary schools solidified yet. So instead of just sharing a couple, we're gonna just wait until we have all those dates and share the back-to-school nights that the elementary schools host later in July. So mark your calendar for August eighth for ribbon cutting. Tell people you know in the community who ask, who ask you, when can they come and visit the new building? They could do that on August eleventh. And welcome back to school night, August fifteenth. So big, three big things happening all right there together. That is it.
All right, thank you.
I have one thing to say. Are you guys gonna include like the marching band for that one?
Oh, for the welcome back night or for the ribbon cutting?
No, 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 for the August fifteenth.
Yes, oh yeah, we will have, yep, yeah, absolutely. They're a sport, they're a part of all activities, so TMB will be there for sure.
Okay, I think that concludes our business for the evening. So I, the chair would entertain a motion to enter closed session for the appointment, deployment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors or specific volunteers of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor or a volunteer of the district or against legal counsel to the district to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government wage in Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public as posted and held in accordance with this act.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. And there will be no action taken after this closed session.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Amarabu?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
All right, we'll have the ten-minute recess first and then we'll start a closed session.